Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Sanchez.
Counselor Corn.
Here.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Best is also absent. Counselor Arnold.
Present.
I'm on the phone. I'm on the phone.
Oh, excuse me. Counselor Moore.
Counselor Best.
No, this is Counselor Best. I'm on the phone.
Okay, Counselor Best is here. Counselor Moore, is she on? Counselor Oropesa.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Present.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Present.
Counselor Halverson.
Here.
Counselor Moore, can you hear us? Mayor, you have a quorum nine to zero.
Okay, well, if you will join, maybe we will have the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Oropesa and invocation by Counselor Perry. If we could, please, if you'd all rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful to be here today. We're thankful for the much-needed rain in most of our area. Lord, I pray that it would help the ranchers, that it would help the farmers, and, Lord, help us with our yards as well. Lord, at this time, as we gather together to do the business of the city, I pray you give each of us wisdom. Each of us come from different backgrounds, different aspects, and different way of looking at life. But, Lord, we can come together this evening and do something great for the city. Lord, I pray that we're able to listen to each other. Lord, and give the respect that is due. And, Lord, that we'd be able to accomplish something, Lord, that would honor you in the end of the day. Keep those well that are protecting us, our police that are out there right now in our city protecting our lives. Lord, for the fire that are there, that are ready for our response, Lord, and the emergencies. Lord, I just pray that you give wisdom to them as well. Bless us all. We pray these things in the precious name of Christ and my Savior. Amen.
Well, welcome, everyone. We have a have nine members of the council here. I believe Council Lady Best is on the phone, and we didn't ever hear from Councilman Moore. I don't believe Council Lady Moore, did we?
I'm here.
Oh, she's there. Okay, so we have a full we have a full full contingency today. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Counsel Lady Arnold.
Tonight, we will be amending the agenda by pulling twenty-four and twenty-five off the consent agenda. They will be moved under new business, and the record will reflect them as twenty-four, twenty-five, and carrying on with item twenty-nine on the agenda. Council members, other than the amendments noted, are there any additional amendments to the agenda or minutes to be made?
Could you please repeat that? Which items were you pulling?
Twenty-four and twenty-five. Yeah, and they'll be noted as twenty-four, twenty-five, and then twenty-nine under new business.
So, okay, they're gonna go in front of
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Oh, actually, that wasn't the motion. I was just making sure if you guys had anything additional to add. So, seeing none, I would like to make a motion to accept the agenda with amendments. Consent agenda items twenty-four, twenty-five will be removed and added under new business as twenty-four, twenty-five, and then carrying on with item number twenty-nine, as well as amend something previously adopted, the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-three regular city council minutes, by substituting the minutes in their entirety by those provided as attachment to in this agenda item.
If there is no objection.
I believe we need to approve the minutes when we get to that item.
Okay, that works for me.
Okay, so all we're doing is amending or approving agenda for item twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Did everybody get that?
Second, without clarification, yes.
Okay, so so we have most of them approving the agenda item as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By unanimous vote, we've approved the agenda. First item on non-action items we have on the agenda is the Airport Advisory Commission. Mr. Mike Espiritu, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We still need to approve the consent agenda.
Didn't we already approve it? Okay, all, okay, for item one, Counsel Arnold. Will you make a motion to approve the agenda? As amended.
The consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so that's why I'm kind of confused, because those were consent items as far as so. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, for the approval of the consent agenda for the July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three regular city council meeting.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
And we have a motion by Council Lady Arnold, second by Council Lady Halverson. Mr. Oropesa, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just the usual question, if anybody signed up to address any of the items in the consent agenda before we approve it?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Foster, did you have a comment?
Yes, I needed some clarification on the approval of the minutes, the and I was turning to it real quick, but so, so with this consent, we're approving the change in our both sets of minutes?
We are we are, we are accepting the minutes for, on the consent agenda, for the June fifteenth city council workshop and the special city council for June fifteenth.
For June fifteenth? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselman Perry.
I just need to to check here. I'm sorry, someone has just said the minutes.
So Counselor Perry, if I may, for item number thirty-three, those are the minutes that we are approving for the May eleventh.
Okay, I was actually kind of confused. Okay, so it's just, that's like another item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess my question is, Mr. Mayor, as I look at numbers twenty-seven and twenty-eight for the, consider the approval of the minutes for June fifteen workshop and the special city council meeting. I'm just making sure. No, I, I see. Thank you very much. I apologize. I found it. Thank you.
So we now have a motion to approve the minutes on item thirty-three. Is that correct? Where you want to be, or you want to wait till later?
We'll wait till we get to item thirty-three to approve those minutes.
Mr. Mayor, one other question. I'm sorry. I don't see the minutes for the regular June meeting. Is there a reason for that? And if it's been said, I'm sorry, there's some ringing in my ears. I don't know where it's coming from, and it's
Uh, I, no, they're not on there. And I'm not sure why.
Okay, so, so will the minutes for the June meeting, regular city council meeting, be included for next month's meeting?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Intima, that's okay, isn't it? We can approve those at the next. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're approving the consent agenda. It'd be where we would be. So all those all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that was Council Lady Best? Or Council Lady Moore?
Yes, sir, I agree.
Aye.
Oh, they're aye. You both agree. Okay. Approved by the vote of ten and affirming none of the negative. Okay, next. Non-action items, we have Mr. Airport Advisory Commission, Mr. Mike Espiritu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Happy July. Nice, nice weather today. Just, just a few highlights of the meeting we had this week. We had a presentation by Randy Phelps, who's the general manager of Airsale. Gave us an update and overview, and I just want to share just a couple pieces out of that with you. Airsale has continued to grow their presence around the country. They have five locations. They have a couple overseas. Their current employee headcount in Roswell is a hundred and sixty, which is a pretty big number. They have about six hundred and forty employees worldwide, so they're a rapidly expanding company. We also had with us Jeff Hearts. Jeff is with Mead and Hunt. As you know, he has a contract with the city to provide air service route advocacy. And Jeff and I attend different events through the year, too, to work with the airlines about other routes to other locations. The reason he was at our meeting this week was discussed about the issues with our current flights that we have here in Roswell. And the Daily Record had a good article, Terry had a good article about the things he spoke about in this morning's paper. But to highlight that is, is you've heard, and you've heard me say that, that it's a pilot shortage, and he's saying, well, it's more than just that. He's saying it's a captain shortage, and it is. There are just not enough people in the pipeline to get up to the captain seat. It takes a thousand hours as a first officer, and I think Counselor Corn knows all this. But it's, it's, they're not flying as many small planes, but big planes, so it's, it's hard to get the hours in, because there's not as many people pilots fly those. Less pilots in the, excuse me, less aircraft in the air, which means less hours and a longer lead time. With fuel costs and, and these issues with, with personal shortages, they continue to see a delay in a lot of flights into next year. So I don't know that we'll see anything changed significantly. But Jeff and I will be attending a, another conference to speak with several airlines. I scheduled already with eight different airlines to talk about service to other areas besides Dallas, obviously, but to western, western locations. So we have western routes. As you know, we don't have a Phoenix route currently. If you looked at that data for the Phoenix route, that route has underperformed even before COVID. And especially after COVID, we're down about forty percent. So with a shortage of aircraft and, and first officers and pilots in these smaller aircraft, there's just not enough to, to, to go around. It's really impacting not just us, but other smaller and regional airports. The waterline project is, is complete, thank goodness, and working on the next leg. I know that Jennifer with, the airport directors, we discussed that yesterday, and we're looking forward to that next phase into moving towards our expansion to put infrastructure in the ground, so we can build our air center for the future. The parking lot is about fifty percent complete, and barring any weather problems, we should see it completed by the end of August. And if you parked out there recently, you know, it's tough to find a place to, to park out there. We, we recommended several leases to the legal council, excuse me, legal committee for approval. And we'll see those at your next legal meeting, Counselor Haldenbrand, and don't see any issues. The Cavoo had several leases. The, one of the owners was there, and he validated that he was in agreement with those leases, so we can move those forward. Last month, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of June, EDC, we arranged for Mead and Hunt to come out to do a terminal evaluation. And the reason for that was, at no cost to the city, at no cost to the EDC, it was to give us an idea of where we can move forward to upgrade, make new, a terminal for Roswell as we grow our community. As you know, it's the first impression for people in Roswell. And our, our terminal's a little out, little dated, can use some, some help. And so the team was here. They made recommendations, and you'll see some things in the future about that. But most importantly, I think you'll find that the commission has a vision to really step up the game in our terminal and those amenities it provides to people. We reviewed also the, the Air Centers Capital project list. And just a couple things to make you aware of. The ones that were the top priorities were the continuance of the waterline development, the BLM tanker base taxiway that we've been talking about for some time, airfield lighting vault replacement, the new airport parking lot lighting, and the terminal design, and also a backup generator for the terminal. We hope to see the strategic plan come before you in August, which is desperately needed, I believe, for the air standard to move forward. So we have a good plan on what, what we as a team can do to help them, the Stair Center people, do a, do a better and more efficient position, and also have that vision for the future of where we want to be. Last month, I briefed about the airfield lighting project and the issue that we had with the lighting backbone. And if you recall, it was a significant amount of money, a significant problem that could impact our ability to fly in and out with American Airlines, and anyone else for that matter. So the Air Center Director has, as I understand, has received state funding to pay for that, and will see that come to fruition and fix that lighting and keep us in operation, which I think is very important, because as you know, it hasn't been touched probably since the Air Force was here. Lastly, on a positive note as well, is Bowen will be here in September. They're gonna have, there'll be their testing as they do on a frequent basis. They'll be here for two to three weeks, and they'll be bringing about a hundred and twenty personnel. So it'll be a big impact to our community. With that, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I don't have anything else. With that, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I don't have anything else to provide to you for your long agenda. I stand for your any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Espiritu. Are there any questions of the, for the Airport Advisory Committee, Mr. Espiritu? Okay, thank you, Mr. Espiritu. Do we, are we any closer on getting any more grants on the lighting, on the major lighting for the taxiways and runway lights?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. I understand that state funding will provide the resources to build, replace that from Ms. Jennifer Brady, the Director.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments? Thank you, Mr. Espiritu. Next, we have an item on the agenda for the Honorable Judge Bobby Baldock. If he would please come, I'll get. If your lovely bride would like to come, that would be fine too. Or she can, she always stays in the background, but she certainly always has her opinion. Oh, excuse me. She keeps me humble. This is really a unique thing for us to have in Roswell, having a judge that has had the amount of time he's had on the bench and always in Circuit Court of Appeals, it's United States District Court. It's really something to have someone in service to our state. Whereas Judgey Bobby R. Baldock was born in Rocky, Oklahoma on January twenty-fourth, nineteen thirty-six, passing both Arizona and New Mexico bar exams. Was that on the first time? Oh, excuse me. He has earned his law degree from the University of Arizona in nineteen sixty. Whereas in nineteen sixty, Judge Baldock joined the Roswell Law Firm that never, later became known as the Sanders, Bruin and Baldock. During his twenty-three years practicing law, Judge Baldock served in the Roswell community by serving as an adjunct instructor in business law at Eastern New Mexico University, President of the Chavis County Bar Association, President of the Eastern New Mexico State Fair Board, and President of the Roswell Rotary Club. Whereas in June nineteen eighty-three, President Ronald Reagan, with the consent of the United States Senate, appointed Judge Baldock to the United States District Court for the District of New Mexico. In January of nineteen eighty-six, President Reagan subsequently elevated Judge Baldock again with the consent of the United States Senate to the United States Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit. And on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Judge Baldock celebrating being on the bench for forty years. He has heard thousands of cases in both federal trial and appellate, at both the federal trial and appellate levels. And whereas Judge Baldock is the author of hundreds of published court opinions, he has also served as the administrative needs of the United States Courts. He is a former member of the Oversight Committee for the Administrative Office of the United States Courts and past Chairperson of the Committee of Financial Disclosure for the Administrative Office of the United States Courts. Judge Baldock has also served on the Tenth Circuit Pattern Jury Instruction Committee. Whereas from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-eight, Judge Baldock served at the request of Chief Justice William Rehnquist on the United States Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Court of Review. And therefore, I, Timothy Z. Jennings, the Mayor of Roswell, New Mexico, do hereby complain the thirteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three is Judge Bobby Baldock Day. Judge, thank you. You know. You know. That, that's not bad for somebody who went to school in Hagerman. As one of your classmates would say, he says, well, Jimmy Langford would say, well, you did pretty good for a kid from Hagerman. You know, and the thing that really a lot of people don't really notice is what Judge Baldock, the experience he has given so many young lawyers to clerk for him. And my niece happened to be one of them, but I can tell you countless other attorneys that received Judge Baldock's guidance. And really, you know, every one of them came back, and they had a party for him last year. But he, but you know, every one of them, really, they benefit from his knowledge, expertise, his civility and his ability to read the law, understand it, and convey those opinions in a wonderful manner. And as, as a son of a lawyer that practiced for an awful long time, I have to tell you, it's always been a pleasure to know Judge Baldock and the lady behind him who was always pushing and keeping him straight. But as a human being, I happened to serve as his watermaster for about twenty-five years. And you know, he was one of the best neighbors you could ever have and always there to help the whole community. And so it's with great pleasure, Judge. I welcome this, and I appreciate that. The only mistake I know you ever made is when you tried to put me in here on the City Council instead of the mayor. So, but, but I appreciate you corrected that, and we got her done. Thank you, Judge. I'm never going to tell you no. There you go, Judge.
You know, for somebody that I've known ever since he was real little, it's an honor to say, Mr. Mayor and City Council people, I'm recipient of an honor today, but each and every one of you are the ones who are the true recipients, for you braved the need of the city of Roswell to voluntarily give of your time to be accused and raked over the cold for just doing that which is right and best for the city of Roswell. And I thank you, and the city of Roswell is greatly indebted to each and every one of you for the service that you've rendered to us. I just pray and ask that you keep up the good work, and this will become a greater and greater community. I moved here with my parents when I was ten years old, and I've always called this home, even though that I spent four years in Hagerman. I have to tell you the one, I have to tell you one story about the years I was in school in Hagerman. Dr. Langford, who is my dearest and closest friend, we had a teacher by the name of Mrs. Obar. And Mrs. Obar, in her later years, looking at both Dr. Langford and me, comment was that if you would have ever told me that the two of you would have been professional men, I would have said, yes, professional thugs. So that kind of helped straighten me out. But to the people of the city of Roswell, we're all very fortunate to be able to live here and to call this home. And again, it's a direct result of the time and effort that you put in, and we appreciate it, and we thank you. One other comment, when Mr. Perry was praying, brought to mind Proverbs that tells you that righteousness exalts a city, but sin is a reproach to its people. So just please keep up the good work. We'll continue to pray for each and every one of you. Now, tonight, you saw my wife, Spunky, that's her name, Spunky. You saw my son, my youngest son, Christopher, who claims he drew the short straw and had to come home to help take care of his mother and me. I have also my judicial assistant, Linda Brown, who's here, and also my career law clerk, Donald Schaller, who's been with me for twenty-five years. So thank you so much. Thank you for your time and your effort, and I appreciate this honor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Perry.
I just wanted to say to Judge Baldock and for our folks here, I learned when I was very young, I was always taught, whenever you have the opportunity to be in the midst of greatness, take advantage of it. And anytime he came to be with us at Rotary, I wanted to make sure I was sitting at his table. He's one of the greatest storytellers there ever was. I don't know that I believe all of them about you and Justice Scalia fishing in Colorado, but we'll leave that. But I just want to say thank you. You've been an inspiration to a great number of people, and you've not just been a man of law, but you've been a man of faith, and you're a giant to me. And I'm grateful that the Lord has allowed us to cross paths, and my life is better from the service you've given. And a lot of people don't know this, and he's too humble to tell you. He was at the top of the shortlist for the Supreme Court at one time, and if not more than once, because many people across this nation recognized what a moral, what a godly, and what a true man and a proud American that he is. And Spunky, thank you for letting America borrow him. God bless you both. God bless you.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. I, you know, it's just one thing, but you know, when we look about the documents that this country was founded on and the Constitution, we are extremely fortunate to have Judge Baldock and share his opinions and keep us following that document to the nth degree. Judge, thank you so much for your service to our country and your respect of our own Constitution that we all share. Thank you, Judge, and welcome to your family all here. You really brought, he did, he's going to come home and take care of Spunky and keep her straight? You know, good. That's never happened by anybody in the family yet. But, okay, thank you. Moving right along, we have the Roswell Economic Development Corporation Annual Report for information only. Everybody has a copy here. Would you like to see that? It's, should be in here. No, it's not in here, but. Is there anyone? Mike, would you care to elaborate on any of that, or do you have?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, first off, thank you for your support every year of economic development in our community. As Judge stated, you know, it takes people like you to make things happen, to help us and others like us to make things happen for our community, so thanks for that. You know, this past year has been a pretty busy year. You've been to many of our meetings, which we've had. You've read a lot of my emails, which I send out a lot. But more importantly, what we've seen this past year is a significant interest in our community for positive growth, and I think that's important. If you recall, if you recall, a few months ago, I gave a briefing to you, and in it were a lot of different key projects, most of them tied to the air center. And if you can recall, that if we are successful with any one of those, that's a good thing. But if we're successful with all of them, we're talking about nearly nine thousand jobs in our community, over eight thousand jobs in our community. I'm not so naive to believe we'll see all that happen, but as you know, economic development isn't a short game. It's a long game. A project that we see today, we may not see fruition for four or five years. It takes persistence, takes support from your body to help us get to the finish line. It's a team effort. We appreciate the funding. It helps us do a lot of things. This past year, we advocated for J-Tip job training incentive program incentives for many of our businesses right here in Roswell. And in case you didn't know, and I may have said this to you before, I forget. I've had a couple of emails since then, and I will tell you that I am told we probably had more J-Tip applications for any rural community in the state of New Mexico, right here in Roswell. And they've helped primarily our aviation companies and a couple of other companies as well. We continue to look forward to other projects that we have on the plate and aviation companies. And just yesterday, I met with three different companies. Met with another company today, and we will continue to see growth, we believe, in a lot of these different sectors, especially in our great airbase. Lastly, our board is, obviously, will be having their annual meeting July twenty-sixth, and you're all invited. And Sis goes back there, taking names, make sure that you got the RCPs and we can log you down as being attendance. With us, our keynote speaker this year is a gentleman from Reno, Nevada, and he's going to speak about Reno air races. And I think it'll be an enlightening and enjoyable opportunity to hear about that activity. But thank you for all you do for us, and we will continue to fight the fight to bring in jobs, to create great capital investment in our community so our community can grow. Because you know, you're seeing development. You're seeing the retail sector grow, and why is that? It's because they see the vision and what's happening, it's right here in Roswell with the growth that we're seeing in these projects that we're working on. We have about sixty-five, six, sixty-five, sixty-six projects that we've submitted proposals on. But you know, it's, it's, those proposals, they take a lot of darn work. They take a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of research, a lot of teamwork by the staff here in the city. And without that help, we could not be at least out in front, and people know who Roswell really is. So thank you again for your support, and I stand for your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of Mr. Espiritu on the Roswell-Chavez County Economic Development Corporation? Seeing none, thank you, Mike. Thanks for your good work.
Thanks.
Next, we have on today's agenda, we have a report from the Hispano Chamber of Commerce Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. As part of their contract, just like the EDC, they're required to present their annual report to the council at a council meeting. Their report is not in your packet, I noticed, but they do have a presentation. They did present the Information at Finance Committee where it was requested to have additional information, so I did bring copies of their financial documents, should you need one. Does anybody need a copy of that?
Okay. Okay.
With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Nava.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. How time flies, another year, and here I am, making a report. Through your generosity and your support, this past year, I can say that we've been able to touch thousands of people through our events, our festivals, our cooperations with other institutions, other nonprofits, particularly the library, school partnerships, and the one that we're really proud of, that I'll talk about later on today, with the new, with the military, New Mexico Military Institute. This year has been interesting, challenging, but rewarding. Tonight, I'm here to present the chamber's annual report. First, I'd like to say that our board, it's twelve people strong. Great community people, people that are committed to making sure that whatever we do in the chamber, our events, our festivals, our tardiadas, which is our networking opportunities, go out. our festivals, our tardiadas, which is our networking opportunities, go out to everyone in Roswell. All people are invited. We lost one member. He resigned from the board. Our treasurer, Mr. Urquides, resigned from the board, but he's still staying committed with us. He continues to be our accountant, providing that at no cost, that service at no cost to us, which I am very thankful for that. I provided a snapshot of our financial for 2022, January through December. Also, because we're trying to fit what the city's requesting, and I also included additional information, and that includes the snapshot of the July 22 through June 2023, which is pretty much an annual financial report. But here we are, the city's support, 35,000, membership fees, we, 3,900, we got $3,900. And then in the report that I submitted, that I just submitted, July 22 through June 23, it actually shows that we got $7,700 in membership fees. The special events, we've gotten $20,000, $20,868, for the total of $59,843. Other than our monthly obligations, we have no debt. We pay all our invoices within the month. We continue to provide free entertainment that is safe for the whole family, for the whole community of Roswell. How would I describe the Cinco de Mayo two-day event? Super fantastic, a great family event. The Sheriff Department estimates that over those two days, 7,000 people attended the event. There was a great variety of food, vendors, tacos, tamales, hamburgers, hot dogs, corn. We had live music, Norteño music, Tejano music, music for all. Our signature event continues to be the Piñata Festival. This past Piñata Festival in 2022, we had the pleasure of having the mayor come and walked for a long time with me, going from vendor to vendor, stopping to talking to people, and it was just a great, to see him interact with the people, and for the people to be excited to be talking to the mayor. Later on, I'm gonna invite all of you to please come to this year's Piñata Festival, September 8th, 9th, and 10th, because the United States Postal Service on September 8th is going to have a special ceremony that I will be talking about. One of the things that I'm really proud of is the Dia de los Muertos, and then we've gotten involved with the Spring Sioux Halloween Celebration. Dia de los Muertos started about maybe three, four years ago. In it, the librarian and I and the people that were working, getting it organized and making sure that it happened, were ecstatic that we got about 100 people there. And in it said, Marcos, this is a group of people that would never otherwise come into the library. Well, over the years, this past October, we had about 500 people. So the association, the partnership that we have with a public library has paid off. Here's our four committees that we have in our chamber, the educational, cultural, the public relations, small, special projects, economic government, and membership, and finance. We have people that are some of our board members because of the number that we have, actually serving more than one of those committees, and we are proud of the work and the initiative and the commitment they have for each of the schools. We continue to look for ways to augment our efforts by partnership, by becoming partners with other organizations. We are in partnership with the school district. We are willing and able to help for the schools, the Nancy Lopez Elementary, the Mesa Middle School, Sierra Middle School, and University High School. We continue to partnership with Eastern New Mexico. As a matter of fact, one of the things that I originally did when I first came on board was to say, you ought to have your information in Spanish. Dr. Powell took me to Taz, he listened to me, and he has that information there. There are other projects and other things that I work with them that I think makes the difference. We just got out of a phone call as they were interviewing, they asked me to be part of that, they were interviewing as they're getting ready to hire a new marketing person. The affiliations that we have are many, Eastern New Mexico, Roswell Mariners baseball team. We continue to support the city of Roswell on different projects, different opportunities when they need help. But one of the ones that I enjoy the most is Keep Roswell Beautiful, because I go out to other organizations, I ask them to participate and help us do a two-hour project during the Saturday, and people that participate seem to enjoy it very, very much. Let me talk to you about the New Mexico Military Institute. They are starting, as you might know, an intermediate preparatory academy. It's known as IPA. They've asked us if we could help, and one of our board members, being a former student of the institute, said, of course, what can we do? So they want us to reach out to underprivileged families, to get students to sign up for that particular intermediate preparatory school, and then also help them to make sure they have the funding to pay for any expenses that they are responsible for. And we have worked very hard with them. We have worked with different organizations, contacting them to recruit students, and also to get the funding. Our committee is in the process of contacting local churches and different organizations in the community. This is the invitation, official invitation to all of you city councilors to come to the Friday, September 8th at 6:00 PM, the US, United States Postal Service is going to be having a unveiling of four forever stamps. They're gonna have Piñatas icons. And they do their search. They took them a couple of years searching different communities across the country, and they saw that here in Roswell, for over 35 years, we have held a Piñata Festival, and they were impressed with what we have done, and they chose us. And it's gonna be a great event. They're gonna publicize it nationwide. I understand there's large contingency of people that are into stamp collection and first-day stamps, and they will come into town. We are putting together a 45-minute presentation, and we're gonna make it a very American-style patriotic presentation. I started to work on a proclamation that I hope the mayor approves and the city council approves, so that we can have September 8th as the Piñata Day in Roswell. The only thing that I wish could have happened in the Piñatas stamps that are gonna be, the four of them, is that they would have put a little alien somewhere in the Piñata. If you look at my flyers that I do for the Piñata Festival, I always hide a little alien, and I just get a kick out of that, but it didn't happen. I welcome any questions at this point. Just let me tell you that, again, we are appreciative of your support and hope that we continue a strong relationship. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. The stamps is, it's really something. We had, I know we had a stamp one time for Robert Goddard and some things, so it's really important to get those first-day-of-issue stamps on a little postcard and send them to your friends. So that's a, it's a real, it's a real honor to get that. That's very unique.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Council.
Thank you all. Next, we have public participation. We, now, there are seven people signed up for item 36, and that's way late in our agenda. We will give you, if you would like, you can have your, say, three minutes now, if you get that together, and so you don't have to stay here until the, till the last of the agenda might be very late. I also have two non-agendum items that Tori Hornick and Adrian, I can't read the last part, that they wanted to talk about the skate park. So if they would come up and talk, you have three minutes on this if you'd like, and then you don't have to stay here all night. If you would rather stay and talk for your, for the, later in the, in the program when we reach your item, that's fine, but you will, it could be very late, so. Yeah, so, pardon? Yeah. So can we have the skateboard, Tori Hornick, and then I believe it's Aiden? Yep. And if you guys could come up again? Please give your name and address where you're from.
Okay, my name is Tori Hornick, and I'm on 1404 West 8th Street here in Roswell, New Mexico. And I'm here to just speak about the skate park and then the recent progress we've made lately, which has been awesome. So I'm thrilled to say that our first official skate event, which was supported by Parks and Recreation and the city council members, was a huge success and had a great turnout from kids to adults. It's impressive that we were able to get from over 20 sponsors, both, sorry, both top skate brands and local businesses. It's always inspiring to see a community come together and support a great cause, especially when it involves skating. The skaters are also using their platform to support other parts of the community, which, as the recent UFO Festival where we participated by, or, sorry, participated, participated by skating in the parade and helped a couple vendors with their booths. Skaters of all ages came together to support our community and had a blast doing so. It's amazing to hear that a few small events had generated so much support and excitement for the future of the skate park and the skate community. I'm excited to announce that the local brewery is also allowing us to use their half-pipe for many events and skate meets in the near future. Sorry, I get nervous reading out loud. I apologize.
It's okay. Just relax.
And then additionally, our skate meets and events have been posted on the Roswell Tourist Guide, which is, which is also a great accomplishment as well for the future. The future is bright for the skate community. I can't wait to show you what else the community has, or what else we have planned for the community, which is also with the Parks and Recreation and members of the city council. And we currently have been, I'm just not gonna read this, sorry. We've currently been fixing the cracks and everything at the skate parks, which is a huge step forward, because it hasn't had fixing in a long time. So that was a huge step in the, like, in progression, and so we're super excited about that. And then we also have plans to continue fixing the skate park up, and we really just appreciate all of this progress. And that's all for me. Sorry, I sounded like I was dying reading.
Thank you, Aiden.
Hello, my name is Adrian Canali, and I live at 2600 Rosalana Drive. I, I'm here to talk about the skate park and just show my appreciation for the opportunity to talk today and thank the council for even giving any attention to the skate park. I personally have been skating for three years now, and each in, each one of those years, Roswell's skate park is where I learned everything I know and have grown to be a part of the community. And I've been given a home away from home and a family, and I appreciate that we are starting to approach and represent the skate park in a different light, more positive light than negative one, and working with the city to plan, saw, brew, and polish, and reveal the diamond that is our skate park in our community, and bring people together, not with any earthly material, but with our enthusiasm and optimism. And I appreciate you for listening.
Thank you very much.
That's all.
Are there any questions of these two individuals? Adrian or Tori? Counsel Lady Arnold?
So I just have to say I'm very excited, because I've been visiting with all of our skating community, and it's a lot of excitement. Many people would be surprised to learn how many people are involved in utilizing our skate park. And so I'm very excited to see the energy behind it. I also have to say, they've actually encouraged me to dust off my skates and get out there with them. So I'm, I'm very excited about all the positive energy that's behind our skating community.
And we're very excited about it, too, so thank you.
Seeing none, you know, if there's one thing I could suggest to you all, is earlier in my legislative career, I helped in Artesia. We had, there was a teacher there, Mr. Flores, and he got the students and the kids that participated in the skate park to design their own skate park. And if you go to Artesia, it's quite a good park. And, you know, I would just encourage you all to set up goals and look around and find the best skate park and see what we can do to improve our skate park. And then maybe you could go to the legislature or city, and we could go together or whatever, and find a way to improve our skate park and make it a lot better. It's, it's pretty old compared to, in the world of skate parks today.
It is.
And we can, if we can do that, if you'll...
So we actually already started, and we have been working with two, two skate park builders, and they've actually are making concept designs for us right now that we've been talking with Christina Arnold and Jim with Parks and Recs. And actually, at our next meeting, we are gonna show the design at that meeting. And so we, we have worked together to do that, and it's just a concept design, so it's only the first one, but we have actually started doing that, because from the first city council meeting, you actually gave us those pointers then. And so we did do some community skate meetups, which we got all the skaters to give their inputs on what they wanted to see, you know, in the future there. And so that's what we're really excited for, because it's a huge step to get somebody to actually help us, you know, come up with these designs.
Keep up the good work, and I'm sure that Jim guy in the back, he'll get you more than a tree sometime.
Oh, Jim's amazing back there.
There are other places you can do things there. Hope he's listening. But thank you all very much for coming. Next, for item 36, if you would care to come forward and state your case, we have a limit on those of three minutes, but if you, you know, you can say ditto on some of this stuff if you can, because we're gonna be here all night tonight. So if you all would like to, or if you'd rather wait until late in the evening, that's fine as well. If you'd like to come now, then we'll have Sammy Lefler?
Lefler.
Lefler, excuse me. Sammy Sue.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Sammy Lefler of Roswell, New Mexico. I'm with Friends of Roswell Animals, the 501(c)(3) Animal Rescue here in Roswell. I've been actively doing rescue work with Roswell Animal Services for a little over 10 years. I would first like to thank the council for considering the embed program through Best Friends, and appreciate the time to speak to you and share my thoughts on how this will affect Roswell. Not only will it be life-changing for the animals of Roswell, but it will help put Roswell on the map as a forward-thinking, caring community, and it will also help Roswell Animal Services to achieve care and programming standards that are in alignment with current national best practices at no cost to them. Animal Services will be far better poised to serve and meet the community's needs related to Roswell animals. I will try to hold my enthusiasm down, but this is a dream come true. I will try to hold my enthusiasm down, but this is a dream come true for those of us who have worked so hard to effect shelter reform here. I'd like to thank each one of you for your consideration for this life-saving beneficial program, and I urge each one of you to vote yes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Suzie Waldrop. Is she here? Didn't make it. Okay, next we have Megan Taez.
I'm Megan Taez, address twenty-one oh five Volkerston Drive. While I was employed by Animal Control as the kennel manager in two thousand nineteen, Best Friends attempted to help the city of Roswell with this program. They made their way down to Roswell with a pre-planned visit, only to be, only to be told to leave by the animal control supervisor at the time, Joseph Pacheco.
Oh, I forgot.
Even after the Best Friends helped by buying much-needed equipment for officers and the shelter. This includes all the cat boxes you see when entering the feral room to make it easier to manage the less social cats. They helped with Zoom meetings for learning about care of animals and various other topics to include aging kittens, which was an issue at the time. They continued to support as they could, however they could. They never asked for money from the city. They just wanted to help however they could because they saw a need, see a need for it, as many citizens do as well. After all they've been through trying to help us in the last few years, I can't imagine they will be back to the city of Roswell if we're shut out again. These are people who care about the animals and positively helping our shelter function more effectively and efficiently by educating staff, supplying the shelter with supplies, and implementing programs that are much needed in our community. They do not have any malicious intentions. I do thank the counselors for voting yes to the community cat program, and from the finance meeting, it sounds like many of you understand a need for improvements. Please, because of this, I do hope that you see the need for this contract. Please help the city's animal control facility become known by the state in a positive light and as an example of what animal welfare should look like. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan. Next, we have Maggie Dickey.
My name is Maggie Dickey, and I live at seventeen oh eight West Third Street. I am a proud two-year resident of Roswell. I spent the first half of my life in the city of Five Million, Houston, Texas, and I spent the second half of my life in the city of Ten Thousand. I like it here, but we really do need to help the shelter as much as possible. I've done rescue work for most of my life, and I plan on joining these people here. I just wanted to give you two quotes. In the words of Francis of Assisi, "If you have men who will exclude any of God's creatures from the shelter of compassion and pity, you will like, you will have men who will deal likewise with their fellow men." And also, one of my favorite quotes, "We are forever responsible for what we tame." So I hope you'll consider the proposal that Best Friends has offered. It's, it's so amazing, and we are very lucky to have them interested in us, and I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nicole East?
Good evening, my name is Nicole East. I am also a citizen of Roswell. I agree with Sammy that this is a dream come true. Thank you to everyone here who's played a role in drafting this contract with Best Friends Animal Society. We've reached a consensus that contracting with Best Friends is the best step forward. The public is very happy with this proposal, and we are ready to see the contract signed. I feel an urgency to finalize this contract for a couple reasons. One, the public is patiently waiting to set up a trap neuter vacidate return program for community cats in which this council has already approved. Thank you. Also, we need to resolve the reoccurring issues, and the public has seen no improvement, such as the shelter is still failing to satisfy the New Mexico State Minimum Standards for Animal Shelters, Title sixteen, Chapter twenty-four, Part seven. There are continuously high euthanasia rates. Two hundred and sixty-five cats and kittens and two hundred and seventy-six dogs and puppies have been euthanized for space in January through June of this year, and this does not include the animals dying in the shelter. In June of two thousand twenty-three, last month, a hundred and twenty-three of the three hundred and fifty intakes of dogs and cats, which is thirty-five percent, were euthanized or died in the shelter, and over fifty percent of those were puppies and kittens. We thank the rescue groups, such as FORA and volunteers. Without their help, the kill numbers would be much higher. Also, many healthy puppies continue to contract the parvovirus within the walls of our shelter. We have, our group Support Roswell Animals has, through IPRO requests, received documentation to show that many of, probably all of these puppies have developed symptoms about ten days, some longer, after intake, so we know that they're contracting the disease after they come to the shelter. They are not coming in sick, they're coming in healthy. And then the taxpayer, such as myself, is paying to euthanize them, and I don't feel they deserve this fate. For example, most recently this week, two days ago, the shelter had to euthanize five three-month-old puppies. These were animal numbers A three-nine-eight-two through A three-nine-eight-six due to parvo. And they were intaked on the first, July first, and they were euthanized on the eleventh. So they did, they developed symptoms between, after three to ten days after being in the shelter, which means they were exposed at the shelter. I am confident that embarking in a partnership with Best Friends will be a major turning point for animal welfare in Roswell. I trust that the Best Friends embedded program is a model for success, and I know that they have helped many other cities with similar issues compared to our own. I just would like to say, what are we waiting for? Let's make this happen. Thank you very much, and please vote yes to approve this contract.
Thank you. Can I have your street address?
What's that, sir?
I don't believe you gave her a street address.
Oh, my name is Nicole East. I live at fifty sixteen Apache Hills Drive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Andrea James.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name's Andrea James. I live at five oh five Carter Drive. First and foremost, I just want to let you know I am a lover of all living things, and includes animals, children, people, aliens, maybe. I love cats, dogs, horses. And second of all, I am a taxpayer. I'm a business owner, I'm a property owner, and I believe that this makes this council work for us, right? So, the city of Roswell. My main reason for speaking is to see changes in the city of Roswell and the treatment of animals with respect to pet owners and Roswell Animal Control. There are many responsible pet owners, I being one of them. I have trapped, neutered, and released several cats and adopted out kittens to rescues and others. I'm not part of the problem. We have pet owners who are backyard breeding and dumping at animal control or just dumping, where dumping is becoming a big problem. As far as Roswell Animal Control, there are no words to express the heartache of what has been going on with euthanization for space, big dogs, puppies, et cetera. There really has to be a better way. The rescues, FORA being at the forefront, citizens who are doing our best to help the innocent animals get rescued. And I get it that animal control can only do so much. We all cannot do this alone. We need help from the city of Roswell and the citizens. We have a great, great opportunity for the city of Roswell to partner with Best Friends with no cost to the city of Roswell. On behalf of all of us who are working hard, pledging money, et cetera, we urge you to approve this contract this evening, all politics aside, personalities aside, I've talked to a few council members, and I just, I just, I just hope that is set aside. So I do thank you for your time, and can we just do this for the animals, please? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Anna Chu?
Chu.
Chu, okay. It's a different way to spell Chu.
Yeah, and it is not, it's English.
Okay.
I live at thirteen oh five Cento Drive, or, well, yeah. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about volunteering FORA. I was dragged into this volunteer situation by a friend who asked me to go with her to pick up a pile of puppies from the shelter, and walking in and seeing the desperate situ, I'm going to start crying, seeing the desperate situation of so many of those animals, like, I have five kids, we have dogs, I have cats, we have chickens, and my heart just, it's so hard to walk in there and see all these animals and know that thirty-five percent of them aren't going to see next month. And last, last fall, I took in a half a dozen puppies that had parvo. That was very difficult. We had to give them IVs, we had, it was a desperate situation to save them. When they, they went to someone else's house after my house, and, and they were all, managed to be rescued. They all lived. It was a miracle. It took ten hours to clean my yard and clean up after these poor, sick animals. I took in a husky with her, her, her babies. I, so I have fostered probably thirty-five dogs with FORA now. I'm, I could be exaggerating a little on those numbers, but I do everything that I can to help this situation, and I, I cannot do this. Like, I, I'm in there every week, walking through that shelter, getting pictures, looking at the gums of the puppies, trying to, trying to get, I've, I've had four pit bulls in my dog in my car one time, I've had my kids, we've left the pool and seen a desperate cry for help and thrown, thrown in four large puppies. My kids were all holding puppies. One of them pooped on the floor of the car, my son had to clean that up. I mean, we have, we have done our part, and we are still doing our part, and we, we need you to help us help these animals. It is, just as a volunteer, I've actually never met most, I've never met in these, well, I met Sammy a year ago for about ten minutes, but I don't know these women, I just know them online, and I know their heart, and I know that we cannot do this, we cannot rescue ourselves out of this. And I am just one citizen with five kids who's got a lot on her plate, that is just trying to do the best that I can in the city that I live in and alleviate the, the stress that these animals go through. If you have not been to that shelter lately, I urge you to walk through there and look at those little faces in there, and look at those puppies, and look at those dogs and the cats, and just look at them, and, and find, and just find a way to do our best to help them out, because it is, it is gut-wrenching. And just as a volunteer who's been pooped on and bit and all sorts of things, I'm asking you to help us as we go through this and just do our best, because they're pretty great animals. There's a lot of really cute things, cute little guys in there that need your help, so that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Vote for Best Friends.
Thank you all. I would just tell you, and as, as we go through this, that as we work through our city's financial crisis, I'm sure you can rest assured, we appreciate this contract. We think it's, I think, we believe it's a good step and a, a good step forward. It's going to take us a while, but I, I understand, would tell you that it, the condition of our shelter is, we, we need some, desperately need some improvement there on how the animals are kept, having, receiving rooms and keeping them separate from each other the best we can so we don't spread the parvo and the other diseases as well. So, and Council Lady Howerson.
So I want to thank all you ladies. I know you guys, your hearts in this, and you do so much. I just want to point out, too, because since the city's listening, the city, not the responsible pet owners, you ladies aren't the problem, it's the citizens of Roswell that aren't. Because like you said, Nicole, three hundred and fifty dogs were picked up in May. Of those three hundred and fifty dogs, about thirty were rescued, not rescued, but adopted, about thirty were reclaimed, and FORA saved about a hundred and twenty. We have one hundred cages. We don't have room to keep these dogs. People need to stop breeding dogs, get their dogs fixed, get their dogs vaccinated because of the parvo issue, and that would help a lot. Best Friends can only do so much. They can't stop people from breeding dogs. So we've got a lot of work to do. I'm grateful for everything you guys do. I just want to explain to the citizens of Roswell why there's so many euthanases, because you can't keep so many animals together, and it's, it's, it's a sad situation, it's terrible, and I, I hope we can get that all corrected.
Thank you. Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank the ladies, too, but I also want to keep, I, I don't, I believe that Best Friends is, is a good program. It's not a panacea, it's not going to fix everything, but I do want to push the other thing that we keep hearing. When I came on this council in two thousand and ten, I believe my, if my memory, we were, it was about seventy-five hundred euthanasia, the dogs that we put down that year. And, and so we've come a long way. And the fact that we're trying to get to a no-kill shelter is another great thing, but, but the fact is, there are some dogs that can't be saved and some animals that can't be saved. And, and the realization of that is, is, is cool when I, when I read Best Friends stuff, is, you know, no-kill shelter, to me, sounds like no-kill, but we realize that there, there's going to be some, and, and, but having that as a goal of getting to ten percent is, is awesome. And so there's a lot of work ahead of us. I, I appreciate Best Friends wanting to come in, I, I'm for it, but I do want to say, it's not a panacea, it's not going to fix everything, we're going to still have to work really hard to get there. So, and thank you, ladies, for all that you do and care about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Sting, no further comments. Thank you, ladies, and hopefully you don't have to stay here until the end, but that's fine. Councilman, that concludes our items, our non-action items, and public participation. Next, Councilwoman Perry had asked to address this council, so if, if the, the council would give Councilman Perry their attention. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make the citizens aware and also the council, I'm sure most know, but yesterday I met with Mayor Jennings, and I gave him the following letter, I'll, I'll read aloud to everyone. It's addressed to the Honorable Mayor Timothy Z. Jennings. It says, "I have been blessed to represent the city of Roswell, New Mexico, for almost twelve years. During this time, I have worked along numerous counselors and with four mayors to make our city safe, strong, and a beautiful place to call home. Roswell has become home to my family for almost sixteen years. My two youngest children were born here, many of my children were baptized here, and four of them have graduated from high school here. I've made more than acquaintances here as well. Many of them have become family, and we have celebrated accomplishments with some and wept at the graves of others who have become so important to us. Serving my city on the city council has been something I have done with love and with compassion. Being human, I am confident I have not always made the right decision, but I have made every decision through prayer, much, and, but also with much study, with the information that I was afforded to have. In the end, I hope to have been a part of a team that has done something good for Roswell and for the state of New Mexico. With this being said, I offer you, Mr. Mayor, my resignation, from the seat of City Council as Representative of Ward Two, effective August the thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three at eleven fifty-nine PM. I have been in the full-time ministry for thirty years, and being in the ministry, I recognize that the average time a pastor spends in one location is four years. I've been very blessed to have spent almost sixteen years in Roswell before the Lord has relocated our family. God has called me to be the senior pastor of a church in Alaska. Our family will be making the transition over the next eight weeks. This wasn't something we were expecting, but it's just how the Lord has worked in our lives. I pledge to stay focused and give a hundred, a hundred and ten percent to the city of Roswell until my last day, and also assure you that I will only be a phone call away should there be any need to be of assistance in the months following my leave. I thank the citizens of both Ward Four and Ward Two for putting their confidence in me through these years, and I'll leave my position praying for the next counselor for Ward Two that will be elected in November. I also thank all of Roswell for allowing me to be a part of a family that has been out of this world. May God bless. God bless the city of Roswell, New Mexico. You're forever going to be in my heart." So I have given that to the mayor. It is not something that we always project in the ministry, but that's just how things go. And we just look forward to serving the Lord and serving our community where we will be going to. It's been great. It's been tremendous. And I thank you all for the opportunity to have been able to serve my, my community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Perry. Thank you for your dedicated service to our community and our city and our, our state. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have item seven on, on the countler. That is, the appeal for zoning case number twenty-three dash zero-three dash Z O C. We have Council Lady Arnold.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to hold an appeal, uh, appeal hearing and vote on whether to uphold, rescind, or modify the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of zoning case twenty-three dash zero-zero-three Z O C. A request for a zone change from R3 to C4 on point one-eight-four acres at one oh seven North Kentucky Avenue.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Lady Arnold. There are second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Perry. Mr. Intim, would you care to alleviate?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have some bad news. I know that you love to hear zoning cases.
Right.
However, this one has reached a preliminary settlement. So what I would ask is that the council, if amenable, there's two options. One would be to formally, to accept the settlement in a month. And the alternative, if you don't want to deal with that, you can simply vote to empower Planning and Zoning to issue a letter in accordance with the settlement that is no more permissive than what the Planning and Zoning Commission has already approved. This is another way of saying that you would accept the settlement terms upfront without, because it wouldn't be further along than what Planning and Zoning had done.
Yes, Councilman Perry.
I would want to know what those settlement conditions are.
In that instance, we can bring it to you next month. It, we have a preliminary settlement, but it, it is still, there's details to work out still.
Okay, well then, and Councilman Hildenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm of the same opinion as, as Council Perry. But this is put before us. What if we vote on this and approve it?
Uh, there could be an appeal based on-
This is an appeal and we can, we can deny the appeal right here, right now.
That is correct.
Well, we've got a motion on the table and we've got a second. I recommend that we move on with this vote.
Uh, Counselor Perry, if that's the case, Mr. Jennings should probably step down and allow the Mayor Pro Tem to run the rest of the meeting because the appellant is his brother.
Pardon?
The appellant is the mayor's brother, so he shouldn't be up there if the, the vote continues.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I have Counselor Best wanting to speak when you're ready.
Okay, well, Council Lady Arnold, would you, uh, probably take the chair? I guess I'd probably be in trouble.
Okay, so, um, if you could assist me. I'm gonna do the best I can here. This is kind of a wing-it type thing, so we're gonna work through it. Okay, so, Ed, are you actually done? Counselor Hildenbrand. Counselor Hildenbrand, are you done? You're, are you finished speaking?
I'm finished.
Okay. And you said, Councilwoman Moore? Best. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Best, please go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with Ed that we need to go ahead and vote on this. And I think Mr. Hess had it wrong. Tim doesn't have to step down for the whole meeting, just this one vote. He said the whole meeting, but I think it's just this one vote. But I do agree with Ed and we need to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, Councilman O'Peso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need to, to get a clarification that if indeed we vote on this issue now, I, I know that the agreement that has been reached preliminarily, will that have an effect on, on, on the agreement that has been reached?
Uh, yes, the agreement that had been reached wouldn't be recognized. The council ultimately has to agree to the agreement. Yeah, the, the, the only thing is if the council wishes to continue, just to clarify, the, the rule is you would uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's finding if you agree that there is substantial evidence on the record to support it. And that'd be the determination the council has to make.
But if, if the vote is, is in the affirmative and the two parties that we're talking about are, are not in favor of, of that, since they've, they've gotten together, I'm assuming, and come up with something else, then that's gonna go by the wayside. And so they can revive...
Uh, what would happen is they would, one of the two would, well, the, the losing party would have to go to district court and then they would, if that happened, they would settle it in the way that they probably would settle it today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Halverson.
So that was my question. If we deny this appeal, then it can't go to Planning and Zoning. They decide it.
If, if the appeal's denied, jurisdiction rests with the district court. And I will point out that there is a, the, the agreement was partially made with the, because it actually benefits financially the prevailing party at the underlying dispute. So the, the underlying agreement is to allow for the same property use without a zone change. That keeps the property taxes lower for the surrounding area, but it will still allow for the parking lot the Southwest printer wants.
So if we agree with the appeal, you can go that route?
If, if you agree with the appeal, the, what do you say, if you overturn-
Or it doesn't go through a zone change.
Yeah, if, if you agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission, then the city is executing a zone change.
So what you're asking for is for us to postpone?
For one month and then you'll see the actual zone change language. That's, that'll be stipulated too.
I don't like these last-minute. This could have taken, been taken care of. Not blaming you, whomever did this. This could have been taken care of and stopped wasting our time up here. So, it doesn't make me happy, I'll tell you that, because we have a long agenda and for us to put up with a last-minute change is not good use of taxpayer time. Though, I think if we knew what was gonna be the change, that would have been beneficial.
Yeah, so I can communicate-
I think we need disclosure on that.
Yes, so the, the change would be to a variance for the property, to allow for parking to the, the, the commercial business across the alleyway for the property in question. And this would maintain the integrity of the community by maintaining the lower zoning standard. And it would also allow for, provide for a greater percentage of the property to be, how would you say, shrubs and pretty things.
I mean, this is a parking lot.
Correct.
And across the street's a parking lot.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Yeah. It's behind the real estate office. That's a parking lot.
Yeah, so the question, the, the zoning commission gave-
Approved it.
Gave an R3 to a C, to a C4.
Right. Well, again, I voice my displeasure for being a last-minute move. Though, if someone wants to make a motion to table this or postpone it, so be it.
I still have two councillors who'd like to make a couple comments. I mean, anyone is, feel free to make a motion or, but next up is Councilman Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I, I don't, when, when did this last-minute occur? I mean-
I only got both, when I only got confirmation from both sides today at noon.
At noon?
At noon. Or a little afternoon. We were in the same room.
Let, let's go with the little afternoon because I was at lunch.
We were at lunch together.
Okay.
Yeah, it was at lunch.
Um, my concerns are, you know, it was said, you know, that we, we have to have findings to support, but we have the findings to support on page thirteen and fourteen. Just to name a few. Number five, applicant appeared and gave evidence in support of the application. Number nine, based on the evidence submitted, on behalf of the applicant, Kentucky Avenue is classified. All, all these things. We have the findings and, and we have a P and Z commission that voted, well, was it six to zero or whatever the vote was, but it was unanimous. You know, without knowing the exacts of what this is and the benefits to the community either way, I think we have a ruling of the P and Z that's moved forward that, that they felt was appropriate and I think cleans up the area quite a bit. It's, it's not cookie-cutting or puzzle-piecing because it, it abuts to C4. So I'm just, I'm struggling to wrap around my head why, why we're putting this off, even again, we put it off last month and I don't even remember why last month.
Because there were no findings of fact or conclusions law for you to consider.
We have the findings and, oh, that's right. Thank you for reminding me that. Now we have the findings. I don't understand why we don't move, move forward. I, I think that that's sort of where I stand right now. Thank you.
Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just to kind of clear my mind a little bit, so we vote this out of here, the appeal goes to district court. If we stop it right here, right now, then any appeals have to go to district court.
Yes.
So either way, it could potentially end up in district court.
Yes.
So I will say, this is going back in my history a little bit, when I was being judgmental, because that was my job, being the judge, my docket was pushed out there six months, but I was elated many times. And the jury, when I had them in the courtroom, was elated many times when they were making a last-minute deal moments before the trial was gonna start. And it's always a better deal if the parties finally are able to get together. Because then they are bound by their own agreement. And that makes life in the community a better place. And sometimes you have to have four hearings in my previous life to get everybody to understand the seriousness of the situation and they're better off if they can work it out amongst themselves. I can't tell you how many times I would have feuding parties in the courtroom, knowing that individuals had known each other, done business together, probably coached each other's baseball team, basketball team, whatever. And I'd listen, I'd come in with the case file, I'd see what pluses and minuses were. Already had an opinion. Could be sweet. And I would say, you know, I think if I just go get me another cup of coffee and leave you two in here, you can probably work this out. And I'd go get me a cup of coffee and give them five or ten minutes, because I'd always explain to them, I'm gonna make a decision on this case. It's before me. I got three thousand more behind you and I'm gonna make a decision. And you need to think of one possibility of that decision is that neither one of you are gonna be satisfied. When I get done hearing your case and I make a decision, both of you are probably gonna be mad at me, but that's okay. That's what I got paid the big bucks for. And the fact is that they came to an apparent agreement six hours before we started this session, give or take. It's a better deal if we don't act on this right now. Put it off because the next hearing will be very short. Thank you.
So as I understand, I don't have complete knowledge of the rules, but I, I actually, I, guys, I'm working here. So I actually, as a councillor, have a right to say something and vote, correct? Even if, okay.
Yes.
So, go ahead.
It depends what you want. If there's a, there's a, a motion on the table, so secondary motion would be to postpone for a month. And anybody can make that at any time, so long as they've been recognized by you. But if there's no motion being made, then the hearing would continue.
Okay, well, I do, I would like to make a point as far as, number one, a councillor of Ward One, both of these constituents are my residents. I actually have worked with both of them. I use Southwest printers. So one of the things that I, I did know that there was actually, you know, a settlement in con, in conversation. And I will say that I did not learn about it till like three o'clock this afternoon. But the idea that our, our residents came together and solved the problem, both having concerns about the historic district and the community, is what I actually find beautiful. And Councilman Corn, this may be rare, but you are right. So I actually truly believe, I, I was elated that they resolved this issue. I believe in keeping government out as much as possible. And if our community members can come up with solutions, then I say that's, that's exactly what we want because they're gonna actually have a nice balance that supports the historic district, but also supports the growing needs of Southwest printers. I, I use them weekly and I can't get in and out of their parking lot. So anyway, that's just my assessment. But anyway, please, oh, thank you.
Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually concur with the two previous councillors and I want to make a motion to postpone this to the August city council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on moving it to the August meeting? Um, Councilman Perry.
Madam Pro Tem, if we're gonna postpone, I think we just postpone and move on. But I do want to make some clarifications. Number one, I, I do not believe, I, I, clarify if I'm wrong, I don't believe that if we were to make a ruling today that there's an automatic appeal to the courts. It would take an appellant to appeal.
That's correct.
So I want to clarify that. There is no automatic appeal. It would take someone making an appeal to the court. So that's number, number one. Number two, and I, and I may not have understood that correctly, but I, I didn't learn of this at three o'clock. And so, you know, I think that maybe if us, if the council would have been made aware, we could have easily, just at the beginning, making the motion for the agenda, let this off and not wasted fifteen minutes. So just, just a thought for next time. That may have been the better way to, to deal with this and we wouldn't have had to drag anything through the dirt, because that's not necessarily what we're trying to do to either, either party. We're just confused. And we know what we had presented before us and what we've studied. And now some, some of us are being surprised.
And Counselor Perry, that I did, and let me explain why I didn't do that or ask for that. It, so you guys' meeting is a quasi-judicial body right now. So the, the body has to be formed. The body must make a decision within the parameters of the case. So I'm treating you guys like a court. We wouldn't, if there's a pending settlement agreement and there's a court date set, we would still appear in front of the judges, ask for the continuance and then move forward. So this is, that was the reason for that. But if the council is content moving forward to just cut it from the agenda, that is how I will operate for these things.
Okay, so at, at this point, we need to take a vote on the motion?
Madam, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, was there a second to Counselor Foster's? Okay. Yeah, so let, I, I agree with you. Let's, let's move forward.
Okay. All those in favor signify by- All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Okay, at this point, I believe we're actually moving this to the next meeting. And I think at this point, Mr. Mayor.
I learned my lesson today. Next time, I'm going to sign up on that list to speak when it comes to an item. So, all right, next we have item, item number eight. Thank you, Counselors. Next we have ordinance number 23-10, hold a public hearing to consider the ordinance adopting 23-10 municipal grocery receipts tax for ambulance services. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance, proposed ordinance 23-10, adopting a municipal grocery receipts tax for ambulance service. The ordinance will create a 5/16th or .3125% grocery receipts tax that will raise money to be used for the Roswell's ambulance service creation, maintenance, operation, deaths, repair, improvement and expansion and a reserve fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Hildebrand, second by Counselor Lady Halberson. Okay, Mr. Antem.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there, we've talked a lot about this, so I'll let you guys get to debate. The only thing is that I note that there were two possible amendments prepared. They were emailed to you earlier. The clerk also has copies. One amendment leaves all the language the same with the exception of an added section six, which provides for a sunset of four years after the effective date. So this would be January first of 2028. The second amendment, which was also contemplated at the special meeting, because of the, the treasurer can speak more to this, but because the initial estimates were incorrect in how much money would be raised, there's an alternative where only a quarter cent would be levied. That amendment also carries a section six with a four-year sunset. Thank you.
Okay, so we, in, in the future, I would, if you look on these items on line 10, one says quarter cent and the other says three, three equal to 5/16ths of 1%, which is 3.3125. So you can, you would look at point 25, one of them has point 25 and the other has point 5, so we know which of the two amendments we're on. Okay, so we have a motion to hold a public hearing. And for adoption number on ordinance 23-10. So, so we have a motion to help hold a public hearing. Is there any further discussion? We have Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any presentation we're expecting? I know there's a lot of information that was requested when we had our workshop. Is there a presentation update on any of those questions that we had?
Counsel, the fire department is here to answer any questions, but nothing in particular in terms of presentation.
Well, I, I know that the questions came up, but I can only answer for the questions that I had concerning, are we, is there an expectancy of a growth of employees in other areas? We talked about the number that's going to have to be for the ambulatory to require, the requirements to make the ambulances do the job. There was a discussion about is there going to be the need for more in, in legals, is there going to be, need the need for more in HRs, is there going to be the need more, need for more in payrolls, is there going to be the need for more in any of these departments? I know I brought that up and I thought that there'd be maybe something given to us today to, to give us a better understanding of truly what, what, what we're going to be reflected here.
Mayor, Counselor Perry, so we, we've talked about a, a large scope of that and unfortunately we haven't landed on anything yet. The consideration is 100% there. We have redone.
I'm sorry, get a little closer, I'm, I'm hard of hearing.
Well, normally, I'm, normally I'm extremely loud and so I normally tend to back up. So to answer your question, we are, we're still trying to figure out where that fits in the budget and the opportunity, I've had discussions with other local fire departments as well. Do they add these positions? Have they added them in the past when they were using it? A lot of those places say no, they have not. The option is still there for us to do so, but in the meantime, we've, we've been able to add a couple more positions to the payroll, but it's positions in the EMS side and personnel side, not as much in the, the legal addition or the, the finance addition, just from what we've been able to figure out from local municipalities around us.
And, and can you tell us again, just for clarification, how much you project it will take to run this department on a yearly basis?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Counselor Perry. So went back to the drawing board as, as we all are human, we make some mistakes. We're learning and we're rolling with the punches on this as well. Through some counsel, again with, talking with my EMS division chief, Chief Miller, and fellow members of our administration, we've, we've added a couple more positions to, to make sure we have the adequate number correctly. We got a better firm set of numbers from an ambulance provider and so it's increased the cost there. So without, I, the numbers that I currently have from this week, without financing anything, if we're going to pay cash for all, all parties and with the additional personnel, I'm looking at about 6.5 to 6.8 million dollars cost year one.
So that's about 2 million more than was previously projected to us?
Yes, yes, sir, that's, that's correct. I took out the financing portion of the, the numbers and so that's the, that's the total upfront cash that we're going to pay cash for.
What is the projected revenue?
Mayor, Counselor Perry, so after the last meeting, we wanted to make sure our numbers were 100% correct. So we reached out to some subject matter experts, an individual who, who does this for a living. I have been working him, with him for the last three weeks. I was hoping to have those numbers for you this afternoon. I talked to him this morning. I still do not have the numbers as to what the correct ones are. Just a little background on, on why we chose to do that, I'm, we can figure out maybe why it looks, certain transfer numbers or certain things. Where we're really not expert in is insurance, so Medicaid, Medicare. And this guy, this gentleman that, we were able to utilize some of our resources to get his information. He's an expert at this and this is what he does for a living. And so he's still working to put together some of those firm numbers, the numbers that we really want to present to you guys to be the most accurate. And so in, in doing so, it's just been, it's been a long process to make sure that we are accurate in it. So I, I truly do not have those numbers in front of me today.
Mr. Mayor, I have potential, potentially more questions, but I don't want to waste the time of our, our council, so I will yield at this point to listen to some other counselors as we discuss the potential possibility of these amendments.
Thank you, Counselor Perry. Next we have Counselor Hildebrand, we have Counselor Hildebrand, Counselor Lady Arnold, Counselor Corn, and then we have Counsel Lady Best, and then we have Counselor Foster on the list. So Counselor Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Antem or Ms. Davies, if at a quarter of percent, what is that projected revenue to come in? Because there was talk about a change in the revenue number. Do you, do you know what that estimated revenue number for the tax would be?
For the grocery receipts?
Grocery receipts.
1/16th would be equivalent, based on our budget, 42 million. It would be a million 555, 555. So for 1/16.
For 1/16.
So for a quarter, you're looking at 6 million 222, 222. So it's not quite enough to cover what the fire department is saying it's going to cost right now. So you're looking at the 5/16ths.
Yeah, yeah, because what is, is, he's saying the number is now includes the startup cost of all equipment, is what I'm hearing. Is that not correct?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor.
It's not going to be a $6 million annual cost.
It will not be, it should not be a $6 million annual cost. This is, this is startup and this is, also includes that, that month of pre-training that, that we lose as well that I know you and I specifically spoke about. So yeah, it's, it's a little bit steeper right up off the beginning. I can, I can kind of ramble some of these numbers. So year one was 6.6. Year two was, it goes, goes down to 5.6. Year three was 5.4. Year four was 5.9. Again, it just depends on our truck replacement schedule, equipment replacement schedule. So that's roughly what you're looking at.
Those are costs, those, those are not net of revenue.
No, that is, that is the cost to run the service. That's not, that's not any revenue.
I, I got a little problem then passing this because you're waiting on numbers. We haven't seen those numbers. So I'm going to make a motion that we, we postpone this public hearing until this full council sees these new set of numbers until next month.
Second.
We have a motion by, to postpone by Counselor Hildebrand. And a second by, who was the second? Arnold? Okay. But we still have other members that would wish to discuss the issues. So Counsel Lady Arnold.
I think actually it's a good time to make a couple points. I, I am kind of, I, this, when you actually vote to raise taxes, I think the details are extremely important. I do want to say that, you know, my constituents have reached out to me and support the concept, so you have my support. I just want it to be correct. Also, City Manager Cole, I would actually kind of like to ask for consideration. One of the concerns I have is verifying and making sure that these monies that are allocated through tax funds are actually paid out appropriately. As I understand and have been kind of informed, it's hard to determine. So when I vote for something that's going to go to the ambulance service, I would like verification that it went to the ambulance service in the next budget. So I don't know how that's done. Maybe it's something to discuss, but I think transparency in all of that is very important and just disclosure. So just addressing those concerns, but I, I do want to thank Counselor Hildebrand for making the amendment because I think we can get informed. And that's just basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lady Arnold. Counselor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I keep hearing about this ambulance service that we're going to build and we haven't had that discussion yet. We've had parts of it, but we have not made a decision if we're going to do an ambulance service. What we have done in the budget that we're going to vote on tomorrow night is an increase in cost for ambulance service for our citizens in Roswell. From 165,000 to 1.4 million. Either, and it doesn't matter to me at this juncture which way we go. Doesn't matter. We've got to have more revenue just to cover the increases that we're going to already have to pay, period. Then we can have a longer discussion because this is just a one-year, one-year deal we've got with AMR, correct? Okay, so remember, they started out the letter to Mr. Matthews at 2.6. Remember that? I saw the letter. I don't know how many of you were privileged to see the letter, but I did. And it was very clear that they were demanding 1.6. So if we don't build an ambulance service and we don't house it in the fire department, we still have to provide that service, in my opinion, my estimation, the same as we have to have a fire department, we have to have a police department. Doesn't matter. I'm sorry if anybody has to call any of those people. But if you do have to call, I hope we're ready to roll. Whatever method we use, I hope we're ready to roll. So this is, this is a two-step dance and we're trying to front load the money so we can make a better informed decision later on if we're going to go with an in-house ambulance service or continue to contract with a third-party vendor. Either way, it's going to cost you a bunch of bucks. The way this is crafted and designed, it gives us cash so we don't have to go borrow a bunch of money if we decide to bring it in-house. And that's what this is. We'll have discussions about the particulars and we'll have a chance to tear those numbers up and we'll have a chance to have more thorough discussion on that part of the argument. But we're kind of in a time squeeze to start the revenue flowing here regardless of which way you go. Keep going with contractors, third-party contractors, if that's what you want to do, fine. We still need to have funding in place to take care of those needs. And that's what this is. This is an attempt to have that funding in place when it's time, whichever way we go. That's a separate issue in my mind. We don't, we are strapped financially in this community. Our government is strapped financially. You've got two people sitting to my left and they, I think, will agree with that statement that we're financially strapped. And if they don't agree, that's fine. It won't be the first time we've agreed or disagreed. And there'll be more times that we'll get into those conversations. But this is about having a needed service available to our citizens, period. Not if we're going to go with Plan A or we're going to go with Plan D or maybe there's a Plan C out there that we haven't explored yet. There's a bunch of smart people around. There might be a C option. I don't know. Hadn't been brought to my attention. Right now, it looks like the best plan is stay with the provider, bring it in-house. That's a decision that we'll make at a later date. We've already made the decision to do a third-party provider right now or we're very close to that decision, I hope. And it's 1.4 million dollars this year. They started out at 2.6. And we had to give some concessions to get it down. One of those concessions is figuring out how to do the dispatch differently. Another concession is that they're going to house some of their vehicles in our fire department. Another concession is that we're supplying them already with the unit. Is that not right? Do I have that straight?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Corn, we are not supplying them with any units currently, no.
Well, we're going to have one available for use.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm, if I may, Mr. Counselor Corn, yes, we, we will have backup units. So if the system does go into overload, you are correct on that, yes. We will have two units available for, for an overload situation.
So we're, we already have skin in this game to get it down from 2.6 to 1.4. But we're still a long ways from the 165 we're used to paying every year or have in recent history. So if you all want to postpone it, that's fine. We can't linger long on this decision on the revenue because as I remind you, we have to have this to Santa Fe 90 days before January 1st if we want to collect any money in this fiscal year. And also, I would like to remind you, any taxes that are collected in January, we won't have till March. So the last quarter of this fiscal year, we might get some relief to offset the 1.4 million. I also did some quick math. The old grocery receipts as of the 30th of June was 1.7083. The new tax rate, if my math is correct, is 7.5873. If you add the full 3125 to it, you get the 78798. So round figures, that would be 1.9 increase in grocery receipts from what they'd been paying to what they'll be paying if we pass the 31s 25. And I don't know about you all, but I, I'll be glad to pay that extra grocery receipts. And I try to do all my shopping in Roswell. If I know whenever I need that ambulance, it's going to be sitting in front of my house. That's cheap, 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 cheap insurance. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Lady Best?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I had you, I got a note you wanted to speak. I'm sorry. Okay. Next, we have Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and that was the, one of the things I wanted to clarify is that we have the 90 days, so we are on the clock. We have to have all of this done by October, or to Santa Fe by October 1st?
September 1st.
September 1st. Okay. So actually, it's 120 days?
Uh, because the, the effective date of the ordinance would be five after, so it's, yeah, it would, it's not 120 days, but it'd be, we're, our council dates on a weird time for Santa Fe.
Okay. So we do still have a short window that we could discuss. And I, and I, I had the doubts too, that, I mean, that Council Hildebrand and Councilor Arnold have said, um, because I do remember the numbers from before were something like 4 million in, uh, cost and, or 4.5 million cost and 4.2 million revenue. So there was, it was, there was a deficit of about 300,000 to 500,000. That's not saying that paying for all the ambulances, um, paying cash for the ambulances and all that. But, uh, the fact is that, um, the, the five sixteenths looks pretty heavy when you, when it looks like we're going to have some revenue and it's, the offsets only, isn't going to be as much. Um, but we do have the current year's 1.4 million that we're going to have to come, you know, and it'd be nice to have some of that coming back. Um, but with that, since we have the window, we do have to deal with this in August so that we can have everything done. But I would be a lot more comfortable having the actual numbers. So I yield.
Thank you. Now, the, I just might say, everybody, I believe everybody's spoken once, wanted to. I would just like to point out that for the, I would like to, personally, I would like to see the council pass either, either one of these at a minimum of a quarter cent. And I'm afraid of the cash crunch that we could be in getting into about when our cash flows into the city and about being able to, to spend it. Uh, because these ambulances, we need to, if we're going to have to order ambulances, we need to have the cash to do it as soon as possible so we can get them. Because each ambulance is about 450, 400 to 400, 500,000 dollars apiece by the time they're equipped. And I know we have ambulances now, but I would like to see us, I, I'm just afraid of a cash crunch that we could be in because I think our finances are extremely tight. And when you throw in salaries and everything else, I'm not exactly sure when all the money comes in and how uniform it comes in, uh, on those grocery receipts taxes. But I don't want to have us in the middle. I think if we have a water problem or anything else, cash flow could be very difficult. If we have another $3 million, uh, water leak like we had out at Noon Optimus, it's going to cause us a lot of heartache to figure out how to pay for that and, and, you know, how we, what, how we spend the money and everything else. Cash flow, I think, is something that we should look at very dearly. I think that's one of the things I think Councilman Corn is, is, uh, concerned about. I understand about raising taxes, uh, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get out of this mess overnight. But we do have some very significant financial issues before us. So that would be where I am. Council, Council Lady Halverson?
So, right now, we're not deciding whether or not we're going to do our own ambulance service. We're deciding just to get taxed to pay for ambulance service. Because if we were to raise the taxes, even the amount we collect would not cover what we have to pay AMR now. Is that correct? It would cover?
She said it was going to be $6 million.
Oh, okay. Well, it's two, we have 2.4 to AMR now?
Four times.
Where's, so-
It's 1.48. Pardon?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Halverson, uh, 1.48 million is the current, uh, offer that's been made to AMR. 1.48.
If we do vote for this tax, where does the money go to make sure it doesn't use for anything else? I mean, do we have a fund for it or? I think Councilman Hildebrand.
Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. I have a real issue or, or problem when I read this ordinance, and I understand, I agree with Counselor Corn, but this ordinance says that we will provide an ambulance system. And I think what we're voting for when we approve this is we're voting to get our own ambulance service because it says that we will provide an ambulance system in good repair to pay legitimate expenses of the operation. We will pay interest on revenue bonds issued for proposing, acquiring, repairing, and improving and enlarging the ambulance system, and to pay the cost of improving and extending the ambulance system and the redemption of revenue bonds prior to their maturity. I'm afraid this wording says that we're going to get in the ambulance business.
Council, or, Mr. Hess?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hildebrand, the wording was designed to allow us to pay for an outside ambulance service at the same time as building reserves for one that we would create.
Well, I, I have some problems with you're going to keep it in good repair. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't say what I think you're, you're trying to say here. It, I don't read it that way.
I, I guess it's-
You're going to provide an ambulance system in good repair. Now, we're either going to provide an ambulance system that we're going to operate, or we're going to provide an ambulance service that we're using, going to use a third party.
Well, I think the pertinent language-
And I, I don't think this is clear. I just don't believe it's clear.
I, well, I would disagree, but you're welcome to make an amendment.
Well, that's, I know we need the funds to do this, but if we're going to continue on, I don't, I think we're voting here, you're voting on, we are getting into the ambulance business. So I move.
How you? Okay. Now, did you want to speak again, or is that it?
No, that was the end.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Next, we have Councilman Perry.
I, I agree with my fellow counselor there. My concern is, is that if we're going to say that this is, this is money that we're going to be taxing in order to either start an ambulance service or to pay for a third-party ambulance service, well, now we've just told a third party that we've got 7.777 million to pay for it with. And I think that that bill's going to go from 1.4 to all of a sudden, we'll find that it'll just go and cost $7 million for a third party. That, that's my concern. That's, that's one reason that I felt, uh, the need, and I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Itama hearing my, uh, concerns, and he did draft a second, uh, so that not only has the sunset, but also puts in for a, a 4 sixteenths versus a 5 sixteenths because we run into that. I felt that the 4 sixteenths versus the 5 sixteenths because there is still supposed to be, as we get this going, revenue coming forward. I think by, 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 by passing a 5 sixteenths, you're passing not only what it's going to cost to run it with no money coming in, but even a surmount on top of that. And I just don't, I don't do taxation that way. That's a concern for me. Uh, whereas there should be room for revenue. Uh, now, I know it's a different situation. I'm moving to a city that the GRT in the city I'm moving to is 2.5 percent. And, uh, blew my mind. Uh, but, uh, different circumstances, different circumstances. I get it. And, and I'm not for raising taxes just to be raising taxes, and I do not think that's what we're doing. I think there's a legitimate need, and I'm prepared to do so. But I need for this ordinance to be very clear, and I think we need to be transparent as to what we're, we're voting on. And then that discussion needs to be made as to, do we really need that 5 sixteenths, or is 4 sixteenths enough to do it? Uh, and without knowing some of those revenues and without knowing some of those numbers, that makes it, puts me in a hard situation right now. I yield.
Councilman Perry, I might point out where you're moving to also pays their residents who, who've been there a dividend every year. They give them cash. So, you know-
Government gave me a dividend this year.
You know, it's a little bit different situation.
Like I said, it's a different situation for sure, but that, that, uh, my eye, my eyeballs almost fell out when I saw that on my-
Do you know what the dividend date is? You better find out.
I won't get it this year, Mr. Mayor.
Council, Council Lady Arnold?
So, uh, yeah, I actually, thank you, sir. I do recognize that we are on a time crunch. Um, of course, every time someone speaks, I, it raises another question in my brain, so unfortunately, it doesn't stop. Um, if we actually didn't even look at this as the ambulance service, but actually just making sure that we have funding to come in to make sure that we're taking care of our current contracts with an ambulance company, that's a lot of money, um, that I don't believe is properly stated where it will go. I mean, if we have 1.4 million, you know, this coming year, I understand, but we have up until ni, um, 1928, we have until 1928, we have until 2028 that that will be going on. So there's no allocation of where that funding will go. And it, it will have to go towards an ambulance, ambulance services of some form because of the verbiage in this. And if there were additional la, language of like capital outlay or other items where we were short, um, I'm just saying that I completely understand our emergency. I support sup, you know, creating the, the revenue for next year, but I also support an ambulance service. But I would definitely like the language a lot clearer because at this point, um, if we don't do, uh, an ambulance service, and we have a lot of money that's just free-flowing out there with no allocation, or it could be, or the ambulance community is getting a lot of extra money. So that's, that's how I'm reading it. So I could be educated further, and I look forward to it.
You know, it, it's kind of funny. I look at Section 4 there, and I think what Section 4 does, as I read this, to provide an ambulance system, system in good repair and to pay for legitimate expenses of operation. And when you look at to, to, to pay interest bond bonds for the purpose of acquiring, repairing, or, to me, all this Section 4 does is give you the authority, give the city the autor, authority to contract if we ended up finding, maybe buying ambulances from A, AMR, or buying ambulances from anybody, or acquiring new ones, or bonding them. This, Section 4 is not something to be afraid of. It gives us the authority to make decisions on whether or not we acquire some used equipment or buy new equipment, either way to ensure that we have all the tech, all the technical things that need to be put in to make our ambulance service, uh, in, in, and provide that in our fire system and with our employees. Uh, if we have to come up and put a special room on there for, to, to house the ambulance in, it gives us the authority to make the decisions to adopt us an ambulance service in here. I think when we looked, one of the things that you looked at when we looked at Hobbs and the other cities, cities that were out there that had an ambulance service, they all told us to get, hire a professional, uh, payer, someone to go after and acquire the money from your constituents that you've served and not have your city do it. They all told us to do that, but, you know, it takes a while to figure out if you're going to get 50% back or 25% back or 100% back. It told us that you needed to provide that. This, Section 4 in this gave the city the, the ability to make the decisions to either buy all new, to do whatever it takes to make sure that the ambulance service we have provides sufficient quality to our citizens that they are accustomed to. I think that's all Section 4 does. I don't see it as being something that scares me because I think that this body and, and our management, uh, team that we have here are the ones who are going to make that decision. I'm not afraid of you all making a decision like I was a little while ago tonight. Uh, but it was kind of wild there for a little while. But, uh, we can make the right decisions on those ambulances in, in doing that. This just puts us in a place to where we can make those decisions and move on down the road and plan if, we don't know the, how long it takes to buy new ambulances if we buy them, or if we acquire some that are in good shape. We can make all those decisions with Section 4. That's what I think the purpose of Section 4 is, and it doesn't scare me. I do, I don't want to do taxes just for the sake of doing taxes. But as this ambulance goes through and we start it, we are not going to have revenue that we hope is coming in like they talked about. It's not going to just come right in as soon as we send a bill. It's not going to be that way. There's going to be a lead time as, from what I understood in Hobbs and the other cities that collect, have a private person collect the money. It takes a lead time for you to get up into where your collect, your people get used to paying the bills. People used to be, used to be paying their water bills here in Roswell a lot better than they do after we had COVID when we forgave them all. They're not back on, there are a lot of people that aren't even back paying their water bills. So, you know, it, we have to kind of sit down and look at that on how we go. And the cash flow thing, we can, we can certainly adjust this tax as I see it, as we go through. But cash flow is an important part of government, and we need to sit down and keep an eye on that and make sure that the money we scold, that we collect on that, it's our responsibility as councilmen to make sure the money we collect on that is spent for what we tell the people we're going to collect the tax for. That's our responsibility. Whether we need to live up to that is on our shoulders. And that's why I think we should do one of these and get it going so, so we can move down the road and, uh, and not have any, any residents worried about whether or not we're going to have ambulance service in Roswell. That's where I see it. So, okay. So right now, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand and a second by Council Lady Arnold. We had a motion, your motion is to postpone it until the next council meeting when we get current numbers. Is there any further discussion on that? Councilman Corn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want clarification before we vote. Numbers on what? What numbers are you talking about, Councilman?
Councilman Hildebrand?
He said he didn't have current numbers, waiting on, on all of the cost numbers.
Can you speak into your mic, please? Councilor Hildebrand, can you speak into your mic?
He said he was waiting on current numbers. I mean, you can, you can ask him again why he didn't have numbers here today. Counselor Corn?
Well, that's back to the argument about if we're going to do an ambulance service or not. What this does is just says we're going to do revenue, and then we can't do, if you pass this- pass this, or, or, I can tell you what's going to happen if you don't. It's going to be devastating if you pass this. And remember, we got to go to a public hearing on this also, so add that in your equation the number of days out. No, we're going to vote to have a public hearing.
No, it is a public hearing.
Oh, okay. But the fact of the matter is, unless we enact some additional ordinances, we won't be in the ambulance business. The City of Roswell will not be in the ambulance business without additional ordinances. Do I understand that right, Mr. Yatima?
Yes. My reading of the drafting is that this first requires that if there is an ambulance service, regardless of whether it's public or private, it would be funded through this tax. Parts B and, Part B and C are not, only are activated if there is debt or bonding. And then Part D would be the reserve. So, say, for instance, the city did not create an ambulance service, what would happen is the 1.4 million off the top, and then any additional money would go into the reserve fund of 5 million, and then all revenue after that would go to the general fund.
So, like I said, it's a two-part deal. This is the revenue, so we don't have to go out borrow money if we make the decision, if, that's a big if, if we make the decision to do our own internal ambulance service. This is not, we're going to do our ambulance service, and this is what it's going to cost. That conversation on the numbers for what it's going to cost to bring it in-house, it's going to take a while to get, get all that worked around. We're going to have to decide if that's the way we're going to go. We're going to have four ambulances, we're going to have six ambulances, we're going to have eight ambulances, we're going to have 10 ambulances. All those things have to be discussed at a later date. Either way, either way, passing this thing gets the revenue that we need to pay. Have we already entered into that contract?
No, sir. We're waiting for the counter.
Okay. So, you're on hold because we don't have the money?
That's correct. And the, the total of the, the, the offer was 1.48 million, just so we're, we're aware. Also, Counselor Arnold spoke briefly about how would we know these funds were going to this particular purpose, and so I would just tell you that those are typically deemed restricted funds, and restricted funds are required to be disclosed at audit, and they are also required to be used as stipulated, which is, this is certainly the stipulation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, it, it's just hard for me to carry on two different conversations on one item, and my mind gets all confused. This is get the money, then we'll decide if we're going to spend it, if we're going to do an in-house. Either way, we need to get that contract signed, and we're already committed for 1.4. And keep in mind that you just get three March, April, May, June receipts, so you're not going to pay the full 1.4 in this fiscal year as it is. You're just not, it's not going to get there. That's it. I'm done. Let's vote.
Thank you, Councilman Perry.
Mr. Mayor, I'll say, I listen very clearly when Counselor Corn speaks on this, because he's the most frugal man sitting up here, so I know that he is not for taxation when we don't have to. So, I, I really listen to what Counselor Corn has to say. My only concern, and I'll go back to this one time, with, with not making a decision as to where we're going before we make a decision on this vote, is if we're making a decis, if we end up deciding to have a, our own, we're going to need five sixteenths, it looks like, or four sixteenths at least, somewhere in there. If we're not, two sixteenths will be more than enough to take place of a, of a third, because if we're talking about putting 5 million in reserves, if we pay the, I, I did the calculations, if my calculations are correct, if we do a five sixteenths as projected over those four years, and we pay a third party 2.6 million, which is what, that, that, that's drastic, but 2.6 million, at the end of that, we're going to have a reserve of 20,700,000 in, in reserve. It's a lot more than 5 million. I'm not doing that to the taxpayers. That's my, that's what I don't understand. So, if I knew, had a better understanding, as, as what Counselor Hildebrand had brought up earlier, as to what these, what we really think are affected costs and revenues going to be, I, I can, I can vote with a better conscience of where we're going, moving forward, because I think I agree on passing this, we're looking at moving forward with building our own ambulance, ambulance service. Aye.
We're back now with a motion on the floor is by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Counsel Lady Arnold, who is to lay this, to lay Item 8 over until the next council meeting. Is that, that's the motion, as I recall. So, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry.
On the, on the amendment?
Yes.
Aye.
Counselor.
This is to vote, this, this vote was to postpone it.
Correct. I'm sorry, I said amendment, that's not correct, to postpone. Aye.
Postpone. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
No.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
No.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
By a vote of eight, eight in the affirmative, two in the negative, Council, uh, Item 8 was been moved to next month's agenda. If we could, real quick, we'll have a break after Item 10, if we could, uh, we have to hold a public hearing on the vote to transfer, uh, on restaurant liquor license to Tang LLC doing business as a pizza center located at 505, uh, uh, North Main. Councilman Arnold.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make, make a motion to hold a public hearing and vote on a restaurant A liquor license, Tang LLC DBA, a pizza center located at 505 North Main, Roswell, New Mexico, 88201.
Second.
We have a second, motion by Councilman Arnold, uh, second by Councilman Halverson, and this merely allows the liquor license, uh, to go in there on 505 North Main. Is there any discussion? Anyone in the audience care to speak for it, or again, seeing none? Okay, the clerk will call the roll on a motion to approve, uh, the restaurant for, uh, liquor license for beer and, I believe it's beer and wine, at a pizza center at 505 North Main. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry.
No.
No.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Best. Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of seven in the affirmative, three in the negative, uh, the liquor license or, uh, to Tang LLC doing business as a pizza center located at 505 North Main has been approved. Item 10 is to hold a hearing on the transfer of ownership of a dispenser's license, number 0890, to, uh, uh, to Murphy Oil USA doing business as Murphy Express located at, uh, 101, that would be located at 10,001 West Second, which I believe is the corner of Union and Second, and it would, I believe the plan is, this is a liquor license that comes from Gallup, and I believe the plan is to put a 7-Eleven or a convenience store in there on that thing. Uh, we, do we have a motion by Counsel Lady Arnold?
You sure do. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing and vote on a transfer of ownership of dispenser liquor license, number 0890, for Murphy Oil USA doing business as Murphy Express located at 1,001 West Second Street, Roswell, New Mexico, 88201.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Lady Arnold, second by Counsel Lady Halverson. Okay, is there any discussion by members about allowing the transfer of a liquor license in to Roswell from Gallup, and it will be to put a convenience store at, it's my understanding, at, uh, Second and Union with Murphy Express, Express Oil Company?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, counsel.
Two, two things. One, point of clarification, is the motion to approve, or is the motion just to hold public hearing?
I believe this is a motion to approve.
Okay. Just need a clarification there. Uh, second question that I have, um, the, as I'm looking on page 44, uh, the not, the distance is not correct here, the distance from nearest church, it shows, uh, Waymaker there as closest, I believe the closest church there is the Christian Outreach Ministries at 101, um, which is much closer. I, I don't know if that changes whether or not it's within the, um, the allowed area, but I do know that it is closer than what is listed on, on the verification process from, application from the, uh, the, uh, one asking for it. I don't know if someone has the ability to speak on that, but that's my.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, we're pulling that up right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I were, if I may, um, we were supposed to have, uh, Mr. Jerry Hamm on the line. Is he, are you there, Mr. Hamm?
So, where is the proposed location?
It's past his bedtime. For, for sake of time, just for clarification, if we can just look at that, I don't know that that changes the way the votes are going to land, but just.
Counselor Perry, uh, four tenths of a mile, so it's outside of the distance.
Thank you.
Okay, so, is there any further, come, Mr. Hamm never came, showed up. Okay.
I don't think.
Is there any in the audience care to speak for or against this? Okay, seeing none. So, any further comments on, uh, the, from council members on this, Item 10? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Sanchez.
One second.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, by a vote of seven in the affirmative, three in the negative, Item 10 has, uh, has passed, and we will take a short break and come back, and we'll start with the consent items, and we only have, oh my God, there's so many more to go, I can't count that high. And we'll take a short break, please. (laughter)[308.27]
Okay, scroll back and ready to go. I believe we're on item twenty-four now. Resolution. Excuse me, we're, call ourselves back to order. We're on item twenty-four, resolution twenty-three dash thirty-one. Uh, res- it's a resolution notifying the Finance Authority City Roswell supports and has re- has required funding for the Country Club Reservoir Rehabilitation Project. And it's an eight million dollar project and of that, um, there's a, a loan in the amount of four million, four hundred thousand and a grant, which is fifty-five percent of grant of three million six. So, okay, that, that's where we are. So, item twenty-six. Counselor Perry.
Sorry, I did forget that we were moving backwards. We're pulling that up, so give me just one, can someone tell me in page number? One thirty-eight.
One twenty-eight.
One twenty-eight. Mister Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty-three thirty-one, uh, notifying the New Mexico Finance Authority that the city of Roswell supports.
Is your mic on?
It is. Are we going? Can you hear me? Do I need to use another one? Okay. Mister Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-three thirty-one, which will be to notify the New Mexico Finance Authority that the city of Roswell supports and has required funding for Country Club Reservoirs Rehabilitation Project associated with water project funding, project number WPF-dash-five-nine-eight-zero.
Have a motion by Councilman Perry. And a second by Councilman, uh, um, Foster. To approve the water, uh, item twenty-four, which is resolution twenty-three dash thirty-one. Is there any, okay, Mister Corn. Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, Mister Sanchez.
Okay, Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor, members of the council. I'm here for resolution twenty-three dash thirty-one. A resolution of the city of Roswell, New Mexico, notifying the New Mexico Finance Authority that the city of Roswell supports and has required funding for Country Club Reservoir Rehabilitation Project associated with water project funding, number WPF-dash-five-nine-eight-zero. Consider adoption of resolution twenty-three dash thirty-one in support of funding the Country Club Rehabilitation Project through the New Mexico Finance Authority, water project funding, project WPF-dash-fifty-nine-eighty, with a total monetary agreement amount of eight million dollars. A little background, the city was approved to funding an amount of eight million dollars for Water Trust Board Project, number WPF-fifty-nine-eighty, Water Conveyance and Delivery Project, Country Club Reservoirs Rehabilitation Project through the New Mexico Finance Authority. The approved funding structure consists, consists of a fifty-five percent loan in the amount, in the amount of four point four million dollars, which include an additional loan in lieu of match and a forty-five percent grant in the amount of three point six million dollars. The loan component is a twenty-year term at a net effective rate of point two-five percent, zero percent interest rate with the administrative fee component of one quarter of one percent. The loan and grant are to be used by the city for the design and construct, rehabilitate two seven and a half million gallon reservoirs. Okay, and the Infrastructure Committee did recommend this approval, three to zero, at their meeting on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And the Finance Committee recommended two to one at their meeting on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, I, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. If you'll allow me a little liberty here, I'll just go ahead and address this one and the next item real quick and voice my concerns. The problem with this item and the next item, if they're passed, and I understand that this is just the first step in a long process. We'll have more votes on this same project.
Yes, you're correct, Counselor.
But there's several concerns that I have. If you add these two up, you come with, with a loan of five million, six forty-eight, two ninety-five. That's a lot of money. Don't care who you are, that's a lot of money. And my problem, Mister Mayor, you put me in charge of the finances for this city. I don't have a clear path to make these payments. These are excellent terms. I don't, I don't question that. I don't question the importance of these two projects. But because I'm chairman of the Finance Committee, my first concern is the fiscal well-being of this city government going forward. And we've got a real problem right now with our finances. Just the, it's just the place that we're in. And we're gonna have to deal with it, and we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. Another thing I learned about this particular project is that it's been discussed amongst folks here in the city for twelve years. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor.
And Mister Mayor, you and I, and I think most people understand, when you got a water leak and a problem, you need to address it because it's not gonna get any better, it just gets more expensive. And my big fear is, once we go in, you see the pictures in front of you, once we go in and really start looking at this, because you gotta drain the, one at a time to go in here and do this rehab, that the price is gonna go up because we're gonna have to replace some of these structural members you see in the pictures because they're gonna be too thin. And if you line the item, if you line the tank, then the patch is not gonna hold. That's not a patch, that's the original structure, is my understanding.
Yes.
And, and so, for twelve years, this has been ignored. That's probably not a good word, but it hadn't been dealt with. And we're talking about going in there and putting the liner. Mister Mayor, I suspect that you and I both have aligned tanks at our respective ranches to try to save them, but we didn't wait this long. We had a water leak, we made a decision, figured out how we were gonna pay for it. We got a problem, we got a big problem, because if these suckers go down, I don't care how many firemen you got, if something's on fire, they're not gonna have any water to pump. Whenever you get in the shower in the morning, you may get a trickle. Right?
The, these are the main water storage reservoirs for the city of Roswell.
And this, this controls the pressure that you see when you turn the tap on. And our pumps are not able to supply enough pressure for you to take a shower. You might ta- you might start running the water for your bath and get in it an hour later. You might get a bathtub full of water in an hour without these tanks, maybe. Um, and so, two concerns, this is gonna be a bigger problem than what we're talking about right here. Bigger problem, meaning it's gonna cost more money. I quit, I feel quite certain that whenever they go down in here, this is the erosion you see on the outside, I guarantee it's worse on the inside. Guarantee it. I'll bet anybody a hundred dollar bill that it's gonna be a lot worse. I would guess maybe as much as fifty percent worse. So now, you're gonna have to go in there, well, you got the tank drain, you're gonna go, have to go in there and, and cut those wells out, if we can find that piece to put back in there, before you line it, because you gotta get the rest of it lined too. You can't just patch these holes. And I'm concerned it's gonna be more money, we don't have a contractor. And Mister Lewis is an engineer. Now, don't tell me you've been down in those tanks, because I-
No, but the robot has.
Okay, so-
We've had the robots in there, and number one, these are not steel tanks, these are concrete tanks.
Okay.
So it's a little bit different, I understand your concern. Let me just give you a scenario. We didn't do these for the past twelve years, eleven years, it was part of the two thousand twelve master plan because of all the large diameter breaks, which is the mayor alluded to in some of his other comments, that we have to have the money for, for those. So, let's look at the worst-case scenario, that's what we, we wanna paint tonight. So, we bid it out, eight million dollars, and we find a problem. Okay, we'll take that eight million dollars and fix one tank. And then we'll ask for money to do another one. And I understand you don't wanna borrow money, I get that. But at twenty, twenty years, at zero point two-five, as you said, the terms are excellent. For his loan, it's a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year. Uh, hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year, with the new rate rate, the new rates that they're looking at, they are putting in repayment of date, uh, a debt into our new rates. And Counselor, you guys will have to vote on the new rates, and I understand you don't wanna do it, but we have these kind of problems everywhere in our infrastructure. The United States as a whole, the infrastructure is old. Every community's got this problem. All I can say, and I, all respect, Mister Corn, and you're the Finance Chairman, and, and you're the dad on this one, I get it. I'm the dad in my house, and sometimes we gotta make decisions. But I, what I'm requesting Counsel that you vote is vote yes on this resolution. We'll still come back with the agreement. If you look on your handouts, uh, you still have the, the letter of award from, uh, DFA, and it tells you all the other things that we gotta do, submission of the readiness, so we still got more to do. You're still gonna get one more chance, Counsel, to say no when we bring back the agreement. And then I'm gonna be saying the same things I'm saying right now. Yes, we put it off, but now, we're coming to you with half of it being paid by a grant. On my side, on, on the Hobson, it's eighty-seven percent grant. My stuff on Hobson, we're kinda talking here the same, mine is, based on the one point two million dollars, my annual payment will be sixty-four thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars, plus or minus. Okay? That comes out of the road fund. Right now, the road fund has zero debt, because I, like you, Mister Corn, I don't like to borrow money. We just try to, we just, we try to proceed with what we have cash in hand, I get that. But I'm gonna defend both of these because they're good deals, and we have to do them. And it was alluded to, if we lose these tanks, yeah, we lose the pressure. But there's two tanks, so there's redundancy built in. So, worst-case scenario, we get to eight million dollars, we only fix one. Then we ask for more money, and we'll come back and, and do the other ones, but we've made progress. And I stand for questions.
I don't agree with your comments, Lewis.
On which part?
Well, these are number two on my list. The first is the financial well-being of the city going forward. And number two are these projects. If you don't get this fixed, and it should've been addressed, in my opinion, years ago, you said it was on your ICIP for eleven years?
It was on the master plan. We did, we did have, had it analyzed, we've had our robots go down in there and done interior inspections. We also had the American Water Association, tanks leak. We were meeting, we were not exceeding the minimum, the maximum allowable leakage. So we had even that calculated, just trying to buy time for all the other large diameter stuff.
Well, I understand, and those are tough decisions to have to make.
And those are decisions we made, that we can't go backwards, sir.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to go back in the past, it's just that it's important to know that this has been on the radar for a while. And it would've been a whole lot cheaper if we'd done one of those tanks, four years into the eleven. Agreed?
Agreed. Every, everything twelve years ago was cheaper.
I know, okay. But no, and, and you're talking about a rate increase that we haven't even started discussion on. And I, I can't even get the majority of this city council to consider a quarter percent rate increase in grocery receipts, or whatever the other number was, three-one-twenty-five, for an ambulance service that we're already in the hole on.
I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm, yeah, I'm not gonna dispute the point. I'm here to defend this, this item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda, and I ask for Counsel to vote.
It's, it's, it's a very important item too, because for far too long, in the city of Roswell, we have ignored the flood situation, that goes to the Hobson Road Project. And, I mean, since I've grown up in this town, there are some intersections in this town, it can rain two drops, and they get full enough to drown a vehicle trying to get through it. And, and that's been more than sixty years, well, been at least forty that I've been driving.
Yeah, and in my twenty-five years that I've been with the, with the city, we've put money in for those same intersections. And when they need money, the road fund's always been the one to, to raid when they need general fund money.
And, and we're behind in street maintenance. Some estimates are six, some are five, some are more than that. You know, I got it. I, I understand. But we've got, at some point, we've got to slow down, take care of the most important projects, because we can't afford to do all these projec- and there's a lot of important projects out there that we can't get to. We just keep kicking the can down the road instead of addressing it. I've, you know, when this went on our ICIP plan almost a year ago, I was up here telling everybody, put your button on the two water tanks. Right? All of you that I talked to? I didn't cover everybody, because we were voting, so. And it was the number one item that we came up with.
Yes, it was.
I got it, I understand, but I'm not gonna vote for this because I don't know where I'm gonna get the money to make the payments, unless it was some kind of deal to where we could be forgiven the payments, which I don't see that. Um, and I don't have a clear path for making these payments. Now, if we actually get a rate increase, then, then all bets are off. But we're not there yet, we're not even within sixty, maybe ninety days of getting that decision done. I hope so, but I'm not hopeful. I'm done.
I, I just want to say, and I, and I wouldn't, but it, it keeps on coming up of, of, you know, they should've taken care of this twelve years ago, should've been taken care of, should've been ta- you know, twelve years ago, eleven years ago, ten years ago, nine years ago. Uh, it's easy to say that, but being on the council, when you have a massive water main break, do we just tell a portion of that community, I'm sorry, you'll just have to do without water this year, because we gotta fix this? You, you, you make, and, and, and I just, I hear that. Those comments are easy to make, but I want to remind, and I don't say this in a disrespectful way, for the past twelve years, we've not blamed Bill Brainard, or Tom Jennings, or Bill Owens, or Sam Legrone, or their council, for what they were not able to accomplish. They did what they could do with the information they had, and with the hiccups and the, the massive emergencies that they had come up in their water departments, and their different things. And it's just the way it rolls, it's the way things happen. Uh, staff tells us what we've got, what, what the emergent things are. We've pushed for this for a number of years, but for a number of years, we've had massive, uh, water main breaks and stuff. This year, we were fortunate enough to be able to have what we're sitting in front of us, and, and I think that if we vote no on this, then, then we're, we're telling everyone that we're gonna be no different than what we're blaming the former council of doing, and that's kicking the can down the road. We can't have it both ways, we have to go one way, move forward, or, or we sit back and let this to continue to corrode. We're at a point where we have the potential ability for funding, and li- like Lewis said, we're not talking about massive, uh, when it comes to the yearly payback, we're talking about it in a good interest rate. I think that this is in the best interest of our constituents in taking care of the needs that they've put us in place to try to take care of. I think it's a no-brainer that we move forward. If something un-crazy happens, and we find out something crazy, uh, there's still time, as Lewis said, for, for us to, uh, to make those changes and, and not move forward with it, but this problem's not gonna get any better, putting it off, I yield.
Mister Mayor, if I could, before we close out on this, uh, I think it's very important that we pass this resolution. I mean, the tanks are in very bad shape right now. Uh, this is just the very first step in securing the grant and loan. We still have to provide financials to the DFA. So they're gonna tell us whether we can share the loan or not. They'll see what our debt service is on everything else, they'll see if we are even actually able to secure a loan. So we will provide that, that's the, the next step after getting this resolution passed. And I'm not in disagreement with Counselor Corn, he's right. The fund is in a very bad place right now. Uh, you guys are gonna have some tough decisions to make ahead of, coming in the next few months, on these rate increases. The fund is no longer able to support itself. Last year, we had shore up the fund with the, the ARPA money to the tune of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the cost of everything continues to go up. All the materials, I'll give you a couple of examples I keep bringing up. Corp stops used to be like thirty-seven dollars, now they're a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Agency nine hundred, twenty-foot joint, used to be two hundred, now it's eight hundred to a thousand dollars, that same joint.
Is the microphone on?
The thing he's telling you is that, and I think there's a lot of expression on this council by a lot of people, that there are no funds in the enterprise fund to fix any leaks or trash trucks, or police cars, or anything. And that's what, that, those enterprise funds are to put money in the bank, so you have them to pay them. And we don't have any enterprise funds left. And that's what the, the concern where it comes. No one disputes the need for fixing these water tanks. No one disputes that. There's just no money left in the piggy bank to pay it. And that's, that's why I have a concern about, on the, I don't care, we need the, the grocery receipts tax money from the five-sixteenths to put money back in our piggy bank to fix the problems that we have, that we're addressing. I mean, you can't have policemen driving around here in Crown Vicks, they've been out of style for a long time. And you buy and use police cars, doesn't make sense either. So that's where this is coming, so if we could, we need to kinda move along a little bit if we can, because we've got this other one. Are there any further discussions or questions about item twenty-four? All right, if there's none, then, okay, if we, we need to have a clerk call the roll, don't have a voter thing in here.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez? Counselor Corn?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have item twenty-five, resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two. And this is notifying the Finance Authority for the Hobson Road Flood Project. I don't have any voting sheets in here.
Because they were pulled off of consent?
I was on consent, never mind, okay.
You have the slide?
Okay. Okay, so item twenty-five, resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Mister Mayor, if we can ask for, uh, everyone to mute there.
If all the, uh, members who are at home or anything would turn off their, mute their thing so we don't get a bleed over, over here in the council. Councilman Perry, would you, for item twenty-five?
Mister Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two, notifying the New Mexico Finance Authority that the city of Roswell supports and has required funding for Hobson Road Flood Prevention Project associated with water project funding, project number five-nine-seven-nine-dash-WPF.
Counselor Perry, do we have a mo- do we have a second? Councilman Hildebrand? Okay, Mister Nahar.
Mayor, counsel, I'll make this brief. Uh, it's ditto on the same terms, interest rate, that kind of stuff. We're lucky with, luckier with Hobson, it is a little more, more expensive, but it's an eighty-seven percent grant, uh, so you're down to one point two million dollars that we have to pay back. Again, that'd be sixty-four thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars, más o menos, a year, uh, which would come out of the road fund, the road fund currently has zero debt. What does sixty-four thousand mean to the, the road fund? I'll probably do about three or four blocks less of the micro surface. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, are any questions of Mister, uh, Nahar? Seeing none, uh, clerk could call the roll for the approval of resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two, the Hobson Flood Project.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Counselor Sanchez has stepped out.
Counselor Corn?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
She stepped out. She'll be right back.
Motion passes seven to one.
Thank you, counsel.
By go to seven to one, item twenty-three, resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two, the Hobson Flood Project has passed. Next, we have resolution twenty-six, uh, no, we passed that, excuse me, we're, now we're down to-
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine for, uh, ordinance number, uh, twenty-three dash zero-eight, to authorize the advertising of the help of a public hearing proposed for the dedication of municipal local option grocery receipts tax. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing for proposed ordinance twenty-three dash zero-eight, amending the dedication of a municipal local option grocery receipts tax. This ordinance will unrestrict the one-sixteenth environmental grocery receipts tax imposed in twenty-seventeen. This is consistent with House Bill four-seventy-nine enacted in July one, twenty-nineteen.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Councilman Corn, seconds? Okay, next we have Mister Intima.
Mister Mayor, members of council-
Good luck.
Thanks. I don't have too much more to add to what Counselor Hildebrand said. Uh, this would simply unrestrict, you guys tonight would be voting on whether to hold a public hearing next month on this issue.
Okay, well, any further questions? Councilman Lady Arnold?
Okay, so I think I've been pretty consistent on my concerns about this one. While I always try to, um, support authori- um, advertising for a public hearing, I, I kinda wanna reiterate that I do have some serious concerns, um, because as we're sitting here talking about infrastructure, enterprise funds that have been, um, actually, you know- been actually, you know, been raided in some sense, I don't believe we actually have an effective plan to rebuild those. Yes, we're talking rate increases, but I haven't actually seen anything telling me that, you know, that any of, any plan is out there that's actually going to help rebuild these, these enterprise funds. There has to be some type of system, and rates won't, rate increases, I don't believe, although I'm not the best at math, I can see from a 30,000-foot view, I want to know how long it's going to take to, if we do a rate increase, to even get it to where we need it to be. That's why I keep pushing for maintaining where we're at with this, this currently with the grocery receipts tax, the 1/16th environmental tax going to infrastructure for water and sanitation, for the simple fact that we need to rebuild those enterprise funds, and I don't hear a plan. So at this point, while I do support advertising for public hearing, I am not going to support this one because I just have been trying to push for some type of clarity. Thank you.
To Counsel Lady Arnold. Next, we have Councilman Perry.
Yes, I want two things. Number one, I want to go on record in saying that, that I don't always disagree with Counselor Corn. He's convinced me this is a good deal. This is the way we need to do this. Can you hear me? Okay, all right, you won one, all right. But number two, Mr. Intimo, if you would please make a consideration, I'm voting to move this forward, I don't want this stalled up anymore. But on the ordinance that is in question that we have here, I just believe that ordinances are very, very important to have, whereas is, whereas is is the justification as the now there for's, or be it ordained. This has none, is that potentially possible, or can you convince me of a reason why we don't have justification?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Perry, this is a formula prescribed by the state. We're only allowed to change Section 4 or 6, and there's no Section 6. And I'd be happy to email you the handbook that provides that information.
That can't be outlined in a whereas?
I'll call Santa Fe if you would like to double check. But like, the guidance from Tax and Rev is that this is the form, here's where you get to plug it in.
All right, well, we'll blame Santa Fe for this one, but I hope you agree with me that it's always good to have justification.
Yeah, recitals are not, no, this would have recitals if, like, if you would instruct me, I'll call Santa Fe, but that's the.
I'd like to know why.
Okay, I'll give them a call.
But that'll be good enough, I want to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll on item 29.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
All right, vote of eight and affirm we've done the negative, one in the negative. Item 23-08 to advertise for public hearing on the dedication of municipal grocery receipts tax is duly passed. Next, we have item 30. It's to consider the advertised for public hearing for ordinance 23-09, amending certain sections of the zoning ordinance, Article Number 52, Appendix A, Sections 5 and 8 of the Roswell City Code pertaining to building and performance standards. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we advertise, move to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 23-09 as you explained.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, a second by?
Second.
Counsel Lady Arnold. Okay, next, we have Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Actually, there is a correction to that. In legal, they recommended as amended to remove Section 5 from this proposal. So this will only be looking at Section 8 regarding the fences. And we are requesting to advertise Article 52, Appendix A, Section 8 to the zoning code.
Counsel, Mr. Intimo, of those sections, that section is the ordinance correctly ordered with the section, it only deals with Section 8?
Mr. Mayor, the version getting handed out now is what was approved by the legal committee. There was a hiccup in, so that, in the version in your books, there is a Section 8 that's in, or a paragraph 8 that is in red. That was struck at legal, well, that was struck by planning and zoning and confirmed by legal committee. So the version you have now, and I'm sorry, is that paragraph 8 or paragraph?
Section 5.
5, all right, pardon me.
Section 5. The proposal was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in the March meeting, and the legal committee amended the proposal to remove Section 5 in the April meeting. So the only text being considered to move forward is Section 8 regarding the fences.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Counselor, do you recall that? I don't recall that we removed.
Counselor Hildebrand, you were actually absent for that legal committee. It was voted two to one to delete Section 5.
On carports.
On carports, yes.
Okay, so we have, on questions, we have Counsel Lady Halverson.
So we're voting on removing Section 5 completely and making this red line area in section?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Counselor, you would be moving, so the version in your packet was incorrect, what was just handed out is correct, and you'd be voting to have a public hearing next month on this.
Okay, I had a question. Why do chain link fences need to remain see-through?
Can you hear you?
Why does, I'm sorry, why do chain link fences need to remain see-through above three feet?
That's, the chain link and see-through fences is a safety issue. So if you can imagine building a solid fence taller than four foot in the front, and you're driving, you're trying to back out of your driveway, and you have a five-foot fence there that's solid, you don't get very much sight distance as you're backing out.
I see front line, I missed the front.
Yeah, so, one of the things that we're looking at with the fences, we understand the need for security and people's sense of security enhanced when the fence is taller. Get that, so we'll allow a chain link, ornamental steel fence or something like that, but it has to be see-through for the safety, you know, backing out, backing in, and also if you live on the corner.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, and that's all we're dealing with on this. Advertise is to allow that addition on Section 8.
Okay, thank you.
B? Counselor Perry?
Please help me understand, I was trying to wade my mind through the confusion. Why has Section 5, the changes that were originally in there, tell me why those were stricken from this here?
Section 5, I had an objection to all the way. When you, when you shorten the setback and allow the carports, you're gonna, it's the same thing, you're gonna have safety issues, because now you're only 10-foot, 15-foot back. So when you build a carport or whatever, then you have people parking behind that vehicle, and in essence, you've blocked the sidewalk, which we have a lot of instances now. So I'm looking at the pedestrians, those that are the, I don't know how you guys have raised your kids, but when I have grandkids or kids, you could ride your bike or roller skate on the sidewalk, and they're all blocked from corner to corner. When you do that kind of stuff, and you start bringing, building structures closer to the right of way, then you start infringing it. And unfortunately, I get what people want, they want more carports more, but then they start infringing on the, in my mind, the pedestrians. And there's so many neighborhoods that the residences are car-rich, and they're parking everywhere, and I'm just trying to make it safer from my perspective. Don't bring the setbacks, leave the setbacks where they are, and, because we already have problems, we bring them any closer. In my mind, in my opinion, as city engineer, we just create more problems.
So, so the change would have allowed that setback to shrink?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, I've always, 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 historically, when we've had people appealing decisions from P&amp;Z where people have gone and thrown up carports, or did a building without, you know, when you start encroaching, getting close to that, we're putting children's lives in danger that are riding bicycles that may shoot out of one of those, people trying to back out of cars. So I just wanted to understand that, because I, as I was reading this, I was struggling with that. As long as we're talking the same language, I'm in agreement with you.
No, that was, my was, I was the major objector in Section 5.
Okay. Counsel Lady Arnold?
So I actually was the no vote, and the reason I'm the no vote is while I respect actually Mr. Nahar's engineering, you know, advice, I think it's spectacular, however, I don't agree. Because I actually think we really need to look at some of these zoning things, because we are seriously, as a community, infringing upon property rights. And so I think that there needs to be a better look at, I don't know that this is necessarily the answer, because as you kind of look at it, it's a blanket. And so I think, well, I can tell you, I've already been researching it and looking at it, but I will straight up say that I did not support the carport section being pulled because of my personal opinion on governments that infringe on property rights.
Thank you. Counsel Lady Arnold. Counsel Lady, Councilman Hildebrand?
I just got a new phrase, thank you, Louis. It's blame it on Louis.
I'll take it. I'm doing, I'm doing my job.
You're doing your job. So, because you said blame it on me, so I'm like, when people come, I would just say blame it on Louis. No.
Yeah, because with Section 5, I mean, we're not changing anything.
No, you're not.
We're not changing anything. But we're not making it easier in my mind.
You're keeping it the same.
We're maintaining the same quality of life that we have now for the citizens of Roswell.
I agree with you, thank you.
Now, okay, now on this, on the fence section, what happens to people who already have a fence up? Is it grandfathered in?
They shouldn't already have a fence that's over the four foot in the front, and this is really old, but we've had that four-foot ordinance for quite a while. And that's, so, I don't see too many unless they did it without a permit, and that's easy to find out.
You just have to go down Avenue de Del Sombray, and you can see one right up to the fence.
Okay, we'll check it out.
Almost right up to the street.
Yeah, go check, go check Washington with that new white fence that's been put up, metal fence, that's thing six foot tall in the front yard.
Okay.
And it says put up by D&amp;D Construction or something. I drive by the thing all the time.
We'll have, we'll have Miguel take a ride and.
It's Washington and right off of.
Yeah, because there should have been a permit typically, if they want a variance above four feet right now, the way it had to be done, it had to go through me to, to approve it, to make sure there was a see-through fence, so.
It's not a viewable fence.
Okay, we'll check it out.
Okay.
And we'll check yours out, too, Mayor.
Okay, well, okay.
We'll give Toby some, some work.
Okay, so, are there any further comments? Seeing none on, on item 30, on a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Councilman, Counsel Lady Arnold, consider authorizing the advertised for public hearing to consider ordinance 23-09, sections of the zoning ordinance, Article 52, 5A, dealing with Section 8 of the Roswell City Code. I'll, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, council.
Okay, item 30 is duly passed the council on amending sec, or having a public hearing for conception for Section 8. Okay, item 31 is consider authorizing the advertised for public hearing proposed on amending Chapter 5 of the City Code for Airport Rules and Regulations. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing, proposed ordinance 2311, amending Chapter 5 of the City Code and Airport Rules and Regulation as part of a compliance process for the recent TSA settlement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Council, Counsel Lady Arnold. Mr. Intimo?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. As Counselor Hildebrand said, this is a compliance with TSA settlement. There's two portions to this. The first is a change to Chapter 5. The pertinent part here is that the airport rules and regulations, the way they're being passed now, shall carry the force of law and have a two-tiered enforcement system. The first will be administrative, this will be administered by the airport director, and will predominantly have to do with who is a badged and allowed on airport property. The second part is making intentional or knowing violations of the code criminal, so that if we have, say, somebody jumping the fence, that we can prosecute under the city code. These are things that the TSA has asked we do. I'll note that, in particular, again, that the, it's knowing or intentional will be the standard, so it is, we won't be prosecuting somebody who accidentally steps into the wrong part of the airport when they're there as a guest. Now, the meat of this was predominantly written by our outside contractor, Faith Group, and that is the Air Center Rules and Regulations. This was first presented to the legal committee two months ago for a month of review. It was also presented to the air, the Airport Commission. The Airport Commission had left two comments, which were subsequently approved by the legal committee. Those were to increase the, those were to change the number of people that have to be monitored by badged individuals in the airport itself. This is a one-to-five ratio for individuals, a one-to-three ratio for cars. Generally speaking, the, I guess, two parts. First, the actual rules and regulations are mostly common sense things. For example, tobacco use should be prohibited to dip if you are near jet fuel. Tobacco use, smoking is limited to areas not with jet fuel, for example. Other portions are simply like, you're badged, you must stay in the areas that your badge says you're allowed in. It also has rules about animals and things like that, but again, these were written by, check for sufficiency might be, but predominantly written to bring us in accord with other major airports that have commercial service. Now, the final thing to talk about is the process for enforcement administratively. What will happen is, what will be abbreviated as a born, a breach of rule notification. So a designee of the airport director has the ability to issue a ticket effectively saying you violated an airport rule. Depending on the severity of the rule, it's anything from a sit-down and watch this horrible video for two hours about airport security, to your badge is revoked in perpetuity and goodbye. There is an appeal process that will go, depending on who issues the permit initially, it will go to the security director, and in turn, it may be appealed to the airport director. From there, it would be appealed to the district court if there's a question beyond it, so standard administrative procedure. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but again, this is a, it rocking a hard place on the, this needs to move through as part of our compliance process.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Intamo, did you present this to the legal committee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. This was voted, uh, was presented, uh, as a discussion item two months ago at legal committee and then presented as an action item last month at legal committee.
Thank you, sir. I would like to compliment you on getting anything through legal committee in two months. I mean, I think that's really something that is-
They can be reasonable on occasion, Mr. Mayor.
Get anything out of there in two months. I mean, we've got, the last thing we had was in there five months. I mean, you've done a wonderful job. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Any further comments?
I don't know.
On a motion by Councilman Hildebrand and, and seconded by Counselor Arnold, uh, to, uh, approve to hold a public hearing for amending chapter five of the city and the city code, the airport rules, uh, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Come on, Mike, it's moving slow.
Counselor Best. Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Yes. Yes, okay. Next, we have consider, uh, item thirty-two, ordinance thirty, twenty-three dash twelve, consider to advertise public hearings, consider the adoption of ordinance twenty-two dash twelve, chapter six of the Roswell City Code pertaining to building codes. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, move that we authorize, uh, to advertise for a public hearing to consider adoption of proposed ordinance twenty-two dash one-two, amending chapter six of the Roswell City Code relating to the, uh, the building codes.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Counselor, uh, Arnold, uh, authorizing for a public hearing code on that. We have, Mr. Intamo.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in our most boring agenda item, uh, we are asking that we amend the building code to adopt the electrical code that the state of New Mexico adopted a few months ago. Uh, we'll be making, it's the twenty-twenty version instead of the, uh, what was it, the twenty-eighteen version. State law makes us do this. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh-
Have no choice.
I don't know much about the electrical code.
Yes, Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, you need to congratulate him because this came out of the legal committee as well. So, he's got another win.
Yes, it's, actually, this came out in one month, Mr. Mayor. It was, it was, we sweated it out, but we got there.
Are you sure we don't need to send this back to committee for-
Send it back to the committee.
Please, I call the question.
Okay, we've got item twenty-three dash twenty-one, to authorize the advertising on ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-one to, or twenty-three dash twelve, amending chapter six of the Roswell City Code to, uh, update our building codes to, to correspond with the electrical codes and the building codes of the state. If the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Aye.
And Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of nine and the firm even, and none negative, we, the have, we're going to have a public hearing, uh, about proposed ordinance twenty-two dash twelve, chapter six, Roswell's building codes, updating the Roswell building codes. Uh, okay, next we have item thirty-three, request to consider the approval to amend the previous adopted minutes of the regular city council meeting on May the eleventh to, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, page two oh four. Let's see, Madam, uh, so we, we have, uh, we need a motion by, uh, about amending the, uh, minutes from May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Counsel Lady Arnold.
Give me one second. I gotta look back to my notes. I believe this is the right spot for this. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend something previously adopted, the mayor, May eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, regular city council minutes by substituting the minutes in their entirety by those provided as attachment to in this agenda item.
We have a motion by Council Lady Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Corn. And, uh, let's see, let's see, Ms. Martinez, do you want to, uh, explain these? Or Ms. Arnold, did you want to explain why and what we're doing? Or would you like to have Ms.-
I would like to refer to the city clerk.
Madam clerk, would you like to explain who messed up?
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, what we're doing?
City council, um, when we did the minutes, we left off the, um, uh, amendments that Counselor Perry had, uh, provided to us. And in reviewing the, um, the ordinance, Counselor Perry brought it to my attention that we had left off his amendments.
Well, if we delayed this a month, take two months to get out of there, this would be forever in the books.
Don't look at me.
Well, I mean, how bad do you want this?
I'm not running for office, so it's not going to matter to me. But, uh, the, the minutes did, did need to reflect. And also, the amendments did not make it into the ordinance that was signed. So, that needed to be fixed as well. So, um, I'm one of these weird people who actually reads everything and sometimes that gets me in trouble. So, sorry.
Okay. Are there any further questions on to consider the, the approval to amend the minutes adopted from the council meeting on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three and correcting those minutes? If the clerk, that's what the motion is, made by Council Lady Arnold and, and, uh, seconded by Councilman Corn. If there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. Thinking an honest woman of the clerk.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
By a vote of nine, the firm even, the, the, item thirty-three, uh, fixing the minutes of the May eleventh meeting has duly passed. Next, we have item thirty-four, to consider the approval of a ward of recommendation for RFP twenty-three dash zero fifteen for credit service check, authorizing a city manager interval, internal contract with, uh, online information services for, uh, water checks for, I believe, the water department. And we, so we do have, uh, Council Lady Arnold. Excuse me, Corn, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll, I'll take it from here, Mr. Mayor. A move that we approve an award, uh, recommendation, RFP thirty-five fifteen, credit check services and authorization for the city manager to contract with online information services.
Motion by Councilman Corn, seconded by Council Lady Arnold, to enter into contract for on online services. Is there any discussion by members of the council? Oh, Mr. Glenn, go ahead.
Uh, we put out a request for proposals for the credit check service on April thirtieth. We received two proposals. One was from online information services, the other one from Crand Credit Corporation. The review committee and the project manager recommend that we, uh, go with this RFP to online information services. This did go through, uh, finance on June seventh with a vote of three to zero to recommend approval. I stand for any questions.
Mr. Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, uh, several questions. Uh, according to the award recommendation report, which is dated June, June the sixteenth in our packet, it states in part, and I quote, "This RFP was to qualify a business or consultant to provide credit check services to help city determine if slash when a utility security deposit should be collected," in the quotes. And for, for matter of clarification, for my mind, is a security deposit different than a water service utility deposit?
No, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. And with the process currently in place, is everyone who checks in for water service required to pay a utility service deposit?
Right now-
Or are there some exceptions?
Right now, everybody does.
Okay. Are property owners, uh, are they required to, to pay landlords, realtors?
Whoever, whoever is establishing the account.
But, uh, everybody is required to pay?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I was under the understanding that, uh, there were certain exceptions to the rules. And I may be wrong. Uh, is there, is there a situation that you can think of when a determination has been made that a deposit is not necessary and the deposit is waived?
As far as I know, no.
Okay. So, will, will everyone who checks in for water service be referred to a credit check?
They will have, it's called a soft, a soft check. And what happens is they, we enter the information. Uh, the company actually goes, they check it, make sure everything's , uh, valid. You know, they check the, the person's name, uh, addresses, all that kind of stuff. We validate the information that's provided to us. And then it's basically like, I would say, like it's a stoplight, red, yellow, green on what kind of credit we're looking at.
Um, what about, what about individuals that are changing places, places of residence?
Excuse me?
People that have moved from place to place, do they go through a credit check as well?
Right now, we don't do any checks. That's why we're asking for this RFP.
Okay.
We need to start verifying-
Well, based on, on this one, will people that have changed place of residence from the, within the, the community, will they be required to go through a credit check?
I believe the way the ordinance states right now, if you're in good standing with the department, then no. It's, this would be for new customers.
Okay. So, if, anybody that, that has a credit check, do they incur any type of cost?
No. Oh, no, yes, sorry. There is a, there is a cost to that and it would be part of the application fee for your water service.
And what is that cost?
I don't believe that we can discuss that unless we go into closed session. You were sent an email on that saying that if you wanted that information, you needed to contact, uh, uh, the finance department because there's a confidentially statement that you have to sign, or we can go into closed session to discuss costs.
When you do a credit, credit rating or a check, doesn't that have a, a, an effect on the credit rating of the individual?
No. This is a soft check and it's, it does not have an effect on your credit rating at all.
But the individual has to give you permission?
Yes.
And so, if they don't give you permission?
Then you don't get service.
Okay.
Just like the power company or the gas company.
Okay, because the way I read it, or the implied message to me, is if an individual is determined to have good credit, a security deposit will not be, will not be necessary regardless if the individual does not meet one of, an, an exception. Is that, is that a true, true statement?
That will be determined when we rewrite the ordinance on what we're going to do with that.
Well, based on what we have in front of us, that's the way I'm reading the, the ordinance, that if an individual is determined to have a, a good credit rating, a security deposit will not be necessary.
Well, and that's the way the current ordinance reads also. We don't have to charge a security department if they can prove that they have good rate, good credit.
Well, I, I guess I misunderstood you because you told me that everybody that comes in and, and applies will go through a credit rating.
No, we do not do credit ratings right now.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about right now. I'm talking about with the new-
And with the new one, yes. Everybody that applies, that's a new customer, would go through this process.
The way I'm reading it is if an individual is determined to have good credit, uh, rating with a new policy, a security deposit will not be necessary.
And that could be. It depends on what you guys, uh, approve in the, the new ordinance. The current ordinance says that if you have, you, excuse me, if you can prove good credit, that we don't have to charge a deposit. It's, it's an optional thing. We, just for ease and everything, to make it fair across the board, everybody right now has been getting charged a hundred and fifty dollar deposit. And that's been going on for some time.
And I'm kind of confused because of-
Well, that, and that's why we're doing this, is to fix a lot of this confusion.
Because the, the way I'm reading it is not the way you're, you're explaining it to me. And it may just be me. Because the, the other side of it is if an individual is determined not to have good credit, a security deposit will be required regardless of exceptions or whatever.
Which is good business practice.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments? If, uh, in speaking of those individuals that go through there and they have to put a deposit down, a hundred and fifty dollars now, and they've been there for ten years and the, and their a hundred and fifty dollars, at what time in their life do you send back their a hundred and fifty dollars?
After the first year. If they have a good payment history, after the first year, that a hundred and fifty dollar gets credited to their account.
Okay. All right. Well, that seems like it's pretty, pretty much fair. So, it's, any further comments? Seeing, seeing none? Uh, on a motion by Councilman Corn and, uh, seconded by Council Lady Arnold, uh, the council would, uh, consider the approval of the award of the recommendation of RFP twenty-three dash zero fifteen for credit check services, authorizing it center, the, uh, author and city manager entered on a contract with online information services. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we have Council Lady Moore and Councilman Oropesa voting no. And we have seven, uh, seven in the affirmative, uh, voting yes for item thirty-four. And so, item thirty-four duly passes, uh, authorizing the, seven to two. We have Council Lady Moore and Oropesa. Okay, so item thirty-four is duly passed and so you can enter into the contract. Next, we have- Next, we have item thirty-five, consider the approval to award the recommendation of RFP 23-016 debt collection services for the city manager enter into a contract with online information services to collect debt. And we have a motion by Councilman Corn. Uh, Councilman Corn, would you make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's late, you're in a hurry. Approval of award recommendation RFP thirty, twenty-three, I move that we approve the award recommendation for RFP 23-016 debt collection services and authorize the city manager to enter a contract with online information services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Corn, second by Councilman Perry, for, to do much of the same things with online services, and this would be to enter into a collection service with them. Is there any discussion? Would you like to say anything?
This, this is-
Councilman-
This is basically the same thing. The reason that we did go with online information services for both of these is they will completely integrate into Tyler. So it's, we, we don't have to switch over to another system to do the credit check or the debt collection. They can get the information that they need. It will save us considerable amount of time for the customers when they're, when they're coming in, to set up their accounts.
Thank you, Councilman Orpressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do, do we not have a policy in place that allows individuals to come in and make a plan to get caught up if they have a delinquent bill?
Yes, yes, we do, and it's used quite a bit.
Okay, that, that was my next question, about what is the percentages of the residents taking advantage of this process?
Well, I, I know when we first started this in September of last year, we had, I believe it was eighty-one payment arrangements that were set up. And there was, it was a miserable failure. There was very few of those that actually went through with their commitment and ended up getting shut off and, and going through it that way. They came in, they made a promise to us, they signed the contract, and then they did not meet up with their obligations.
And then you went off and turned off the, the water?
Yes, then we went into enforcement.
Until such time that they come in and pay, or?
They pay, after, after they're shut off, they're required to pay the full amount.
So when, when the water is turned off, does the city still continue to bill the residents, the minimum charge for the water bill?
Because they, they continue to have the service available to them.
But if the water is not on, they're not using it?
The service is still available to the property.
I'm sorry?
The service is still available to the property.
The meters, what you're saying.
The meter's still there. If they want, if they want to stop their service completely, they can call in and request, and we'll come and pull the meter. And then they do not get any charges after that.
Do, do you have any, any information as to percentages that, that, of people having delinquent bills? How many of them are Roswell residents, and how many of them are individuals that have left the, the, the community?
There's no way that we could separate that out.
And you don't have a way of determining the length of time, how many individuals are delinquent for one, two, three months, and what have you?
We, we know who's delinquent for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, and over a hundred and twenty days.
And is this company also going to charge this, or is this company going to charge the city in any type, any type of charge for their services?
They take a percentage of what they recover.
But the city doesn't, well, let, let me, let me go back. So it's just a, a percentage that they recover, and then the, the city gets the, the true amount?
We would get the eighty percent of what's recovered.
So you're only recovering eighty percent?
No, we're covering up, we're recovering a hundred percent, we're having to pay the twenty percent for this debt collection service.
Okay. So how, how long does it take for the city to make the determination that they have to refer the individual to, to this company? Is it when it's one month, one month delinquent, two months?
After we've, after we've gone through our process, they have to be, they have to be three months delinquent before we start taking action. When they're delinquent for three months, we go out and shut off their water. A number of times, we find out that it's not even the person that's living there that owes the money anymore, but nobody bothered to tell the city. So we have a renter that's absconded and has not paid their bill, and we have no process right now to recover that money.
So with this one, you will?
Yes. We have one point five, approximately one point five million dollars in outstanding debt from January of last year.
Because if you, if you're talking about somebody that just up and left, and you refer them-
That's what these people do, is they track them down and get their money back.
Or they try to, anyway.
Well, they have a pretty good success rate.
Okay. Because in my mind, it seems like the, what we actually doing is putting additional debt on the individual. So instead of helping-
We didn't put the debt on them. They owe us for services rendered by the city.
Yeah, but this company is going to take them to court, get a percentage of, of that amount?
They will collect the debt that's owed to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Council Lady Best.
Yes, just a quick question. Since we're thinking about an ambulance service, and these guys use Tyler, can they be plugged into the ambulance service later on down with the same contract?
Yes, when we wrote this, we did it so it was open to any debt collection needed by the city.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing that, where is, uh, where is Winterville, New Mexico? This online services is from Winterville, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's actually North Carolina. North Carolina? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Man, where are we getting this information? It's so-
There's Pueblo and Bierno, but that's further north.
Holy smokes. Well, we, we might get there. All right, seeing there's no, no further comments. Okay, on a motion by Councilman Corn, second by Councilor Perry, item, art, item RFP, item thirty-five, RFP 23-016, consider the award of recommendation to, for debt collection services and authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract with online information services. The clerk will call the roll.
We can do a voice vote, Mayor.
Oh, okay, well, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed signify by saying no?
No.
No.
Okay, we have Council Lady Moore, no, and Councilor Orpressa, no. So a by a vote of seven in the affirmative, two in the negative. Item thirty-five, which is to allow the city manager contract with online services, has duly passed. Next, we have item thirty-six, to consider the approval of, to enter into a grant agreement between Best Friends and the Animal Society of Roswell. Anyone like to go to the bathroom or take a long break?
No.
Well, was it? Oh. Well, I know, but she's, she's loyal, true and blue. So, okay, so we, to consider the approval to enter into a grant agreement between Best Friends Animal, Animal Society and the City of Roswell. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve to enter into a grant agreement between Best Friends, Animal Society, and the City of Roswell, or the Roswell Animal Control.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Council Lady Halverson.
Perry.
Oh, Perry, excuse me.
And I have a motion I need to make.
Councilman Perry. Okay, so now we're on discussion, Council Lady Halverson.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend the contract in your agenda, with the contract as provided on, on Ju-, July 12th, 2023, via email and provided in writing today at our meeting.
Okay, we have, we have, there's a, in your packet, you have an amendment to this contract- on the Friends of Roswell, it's, it's a long agreement to change the contract, it looks like that. And, uh-
It was also emailed on-
And it was emailed out to everyone, and then it was also placed here today to change the contract. Uh, city, uh, city manager Cole, have you been through this contract? It's, this one's a-okay for you to sign?
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion, is there a second?
Oh, we had a motion by-
To, to amend.
We have a motion to amend, uh, the-
Use the amended version.
To change the contract to the amended contract by Council Lady, uh, Halverson. To amend the contract by Council Lady Halverson, is there a second? Councilman Corn seconds. Okay, now for discussion of that.
I do want to say Mr. Richard Angelo from Best Friends is online for the meeting, too.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Angelo. Mr. Intimid, would you like to tell us the difference?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so the, the amendment cleans up some scribner that was in issue. Also, at the bottom of page two thirty, you'll see that it says June nineteenth. That is amended to read July seventeenth now, I believe. And then also, in your packet, were omitted Exhibits A and B. Exhibit A is the presentation that was already sent to the city about eight or nine months ago, when Best Friends came and did an audit. And Exhibit B is the types of programs that they would like to implement. Number one on that exhibit, the council's already approved by resolution. And that was really the, from management's perspective, and Mr. Matthews is here to speak about, the other programs are stuff that the city can accomplish and would like to implement independent of the contract, anyway. We, and that's why we decided to get a resolution for the spay and neuter program ahead of time. Otherwise, the, the contract is substantively unchanged from the legal committee meeting. In exchange for being able, for providing us with a, I got, an expert to manage for up to a year and to pay for all of the management, they will have rights for, to use photographs taken at the facility for their own promotional capacities. There is a, in total, there's a four-year non-disparagement clause between the city and the Best Friends. So it's no, non-disparagement during the course of the contract, one year, and then, or the grant agreement, as they're calling it. And then there's a three-year non-disparagement after that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Intimid. Mr. Angelo, is there any comments you would like to make about this contract? I assume you've seen the amended contract.
Yes, I have, and, and thank you very much for letting me address you tonight. I am, for the record, I'm a senior manager of the National embed programs, which will be the program that you will be working with if you approve this contract. So I have seen the amended version, and everything that has been stated is, is true. So we're looking forward, hopefully, to work with you very, very closely to improve the services and, and bring it to top-notch for the community in Roswell.
Okay, thank you. Council Lady Halverson. Oh, you want to vote on the motion to change the contract? Okay. Okay, so is there any further discussion? The motion before us is to allow, a motion by Council Lady Halverson and seconded by Councilman Corn allows us to change the contract from the one in your book to the one that has been placed at your table this morning and sent to you by email. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we have an amended contract.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, Council Lady, uh, Halverson.
So I just have a short statement I want to read, and just, how important it is to bring the Best Friends embed to the City of Roswell to assist with animal control operations is a tremendous opportunity that will greatly benefit the community. Best Friends is widely recognized for its expertise in animal welfare and its commitment to saving and improving the lives of companion animals. With their presence in Roswell, the city will have access to invaluable resources, knowledge, and support to address the challenges faced by animal control. We've also been in contact with them several times, they've come down and visited, and they've also given us grant opportunities, so we can do spay and neuter clinics and information like that. So they, so far, even without the embed, they've been an invaluable resource, so I encourage you guys to vote for this.
Thank you, Council Lady Halverson. Are there any further comments or questions? Okay, so now, seeing none, with no one else on the list to speak, we'll be voting on item thirty-six, which is the amended, uh, uh, contract agreement between Best Friends Animal Society and the City of Roswell on working with our Animals Treatment Center. So we are voting on that, on a motion by Council, uh, Councilman, Council Lady Halverson and seconded by Councilman Corn. If, all those in favor signify? Why? No, we just, oh, that, that's amended, that's right. Excuse me, we're voting on Councilman Hildebrand's motion, uh, as, as amended to enter into an agreement between the Best Friends Animal Society and the City of Roswell, uh, as amended. It's made, motion was made by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Perry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So opposed, we have Council Lady Best. Is anyone else? I believe-
I'm not opposed, I vote yes.
Oh, you vote yes, okay.
I vote yes.
Okay, by a vote of nine in the affirmative, none in the negative. Item thirty-six is duly passed, the, uh, the council. Next, we have on item thirty-seven, I don't know why it takes so long to work on the museum, but item thirty-seven is consider the order of awarding of ITB twenty-three dash twenty-five for the Roswell Museum Flooring Replacement to Wade Construction. Okay, we have, uh, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, move we adopt the award ITB twenty-three oh twenty-five, the Roswell Museum Flooring Replacement to Wade Construction.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Corn, a second by Councilman Arnold. Okay. And so, uh, okay, yes, ma'am. Caroline.
So, good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I have before you consideration of awarding ITB twenty-three dash zero-two-five, Roswell Museum Flooring Replacement to Wade Construction. The bid came in at five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars with, inclusive of a fifty thousand dollars contingency fund, uh, account, money. And with taxes, that would be six hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven and twenty-eight cents, if all the contingency is used. We were allotted six hundred thousand through the city's capital funds. Should it go over the six hundred thousand, we do have state appropriations that we can contribute towards that if it uses all the contingency funds. It was voted in favor of three to zero at the Finance Committee, um, July sixth of last week. Can I stand for any questions?
Are there any questions of, Caroline? Seeing none, I, I would just, I would hope we would look. I noticed in our city manager's office, the flooring was coming up. manager's office, the flooring was coming up already, and it was all brand new. Uh, I hope that you have a little better flooring. So maybe a little thicker or something where they glue it and better glue. Any further comments? Okay, on a motion to approve the contract with Wade construction on installing the flooring, uh, motion by Councilman Corn, seconded by Council Lady Arnold. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of nine, affirmative, none in the negative, uh, item thirty-seven is duly passed. Next we have item thirty-eight, to hold a closed session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten fifteen, eight, dash, H one, five, six, and seven, for the discussion of bargaining strategy for the collective bargaining agreements that we have pursuant, pursuant to the, uh, Pukemac Road. We'd take them, uh, we'd have a, we have a motion to, uh, Council Lady Arnold to go into the executive session to discuss item thirty-eight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss item eight, uh, thirty-eight.
Here we have a-
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Lady Arnold, seconded by Councilor Hildebrand. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
You have to do a roll call.
Oh, roll call, okay.
You have to do a roll call.
Okay, okay, okay.
Council Perry.
Clerk will call the roll.
Council Perry.
Aye.
Council Corn.
Yes.
Council Moore.
Yes.
Council Best.
Yes.
Council Arnold. Council Orpressa.
Yes.
Council Foster.
Yes.
Council Hildebrand.
Aye.
Council Halverson.
Yes.
Surprisingly, by a vote of nine and affirmative, none in the negative, we'll go into closed session. So, do we have to go in the back room? You know, I've been trying to go through here pretty quick, and you guys sure are slowing things up.